Good evening and welcome to the Norwood School Committee Meeting of Wednesday, October 16th. We are coming into you this evening in hybrid format. We have myself and Dr. Joan Giblin in person at the Savage Center. And remote, we have Kate Seming Dunn and Teresa Stewart. I'm going to ask everyone who is in attendance to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. So first item on our agenda is the approval of minutes. You have one set of minutes in our packet. The other set of minutes, we did not receive before our deadline. So we're only going to look at the open session minutes from September 25th. Does anyone have any questions or discussion on those minutes?
And Maria, I just have one suggestion to edit.
Sure.
Under school committee goals for the discussion, I did volunteer to work with you on that, but so did Joan. And then I think he said you chose Joan. So if the minutes could be replaced.
No, I think the minutes are fine.
So that we will, myself and Joan will work on those. With that edit, are there any other questions or concerns or discussion on the minutes?
I'll make a motion to you approve with those edits.
Moved by Teresa, seconded by Joan. Since we are hybrid, I'll have to do roll call. So Teresa?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. So that passes four to zero. I did not mention for the record, I apologize, that Mr. David Hiltz is not joining us this evening. He may be able to join us later if we are still in session. But that is to be determined. Okay, so moving on to our second item on the agenda is correspondence. Mr. Luff, do we have any correspondence this evening?
We do not, ma'am, sure.
Wonderful. Moving on to the next item is the warrant report. So this week, I signed warrants in the amounts of $2,056,912.36, $76,068.18, and $8,454.34, for a total of $2,416,77.94. Are there any questions on the warrant report tonight? Seeing none, we will move on to our next item on the agenda is public comment. So as a reminder to the public, a public comment can be accessed in multiple ways. You can call the superintendent's office by noon the day of our meeting to either receive a link to our hybrid meeting or to put your name on our in-person list. You can also come to the Savage Center at the time of our meeting and sign in at that time. Mr. Luff, has anyone pre-registered for public comment this evening?
They have not, ma'am, sure.
Is anyone here for public comment this evening? Seeing none, at 7:10, I will declare public comment closed. All right. So we will move on to our next item. We have a couple of appearances this evening. First on our appearance list is, we have Mr. Eli Norris, a guest for the Quarterly Food Services Update.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. I'm Elijah Norris, Director of School Nutrition. And with me is the one and only Mrs. Erin Long. She is our area director. She's in charge of keeping me in line if Mr. Luffin or Mr. Mannion are busy, which can be a full-time job, I know. So we love to come to you in front of you guys in the fall, a little bit once the school year has started, and kind of lay out the plan of what we want to do for the school year, and also kind of look back at some of the things that have happened in the previous year. So we'll start off with a quick recap of the summer program. So if you are not aware, we do have a free meals summer program. Traditionally, it's always been housed at the Cokely Middle School. Due to the construction and all the activities down there, the site was closed. So we operated at the Cleveland, at the high school, and at the Willett. Overall, the meals for the summer program were down. We lost the rec department, who was mostly over at the other pool. So it was kind of to be expected, but we made it through, and kids got meals. The meals were available. Looking at the next slide, we have the last two years of financials, as well as this year's budget. So overall, again, a very solid program. I think I've said every time I've presented, like the meal counts continue to go up. We have the first-world problems of serving a lot of meals to a lot of kids and having a strong program financially. The next slide, if we just were to look at the meal counts just for the month of September, starting pre-COVID, all the way to the left in the dark blue, we were around 2,400 meals per day. And that's reimbursable meals, that's breakfast, that's lunch, and that's à la carte equivalents. And then you'll see the COVID hybrid year in red where it dipped way down just for September. And then ever since then, it's continued to climb up and up and up. We are up 300 meals over last September. This is an average per day. So I think there's a lot of different things that are factoring into this. More parents going back to the, you know, full-time work, the price of groceries at home. Meals are universal free. We love when kids come in and get meals with us. So this is, it's a good problem to have, serving more and more meals. The next slide is just a reminder that meals are universal free. And Norwood is approved for CEP, which is the Community Eligibility Provisions. It's district-wide. So the parents no longer have to fill in a paper-free and reduced application for meal benefits. There are some different programs that may offer a benefit, like transportation, or IT with the Chromebook insurance, or for testing with, you know, SATs or ACTs. So those programs now have their own application or system to extend their benefit. But as far as meals are concerned, there are no applications needed. Then, this is just a few slides of some of our different fun programming. Mood Boost is an elementary-based program. This is a seven-week program where students try a variety of different foods, and they get to, you know, learn a little bit about how different ingredients and things in foods will make you feel different ways. So the little colorful characters are called the Moody's. They're strong and happy and confident, and it's a fun program that the elementary kids love. The next slide, we have our Smoothie Bike, which we will have coming up soon at the Wellness Fair in early November. So we're excited about that. It's a bike that makes smoothies. That's the only way I can describe it. And if you don't understand what that is, then come to the Wellness Fair and you can, you can put some miles in. Next up, we have, we have our Student Choice. This is a high school and middle school event. This is where we feature two different recipes, and the students vote. So we actually held one of these events last week at the high school. It was a Memphis pulled pork sandwich versus a Southwest Chicken flatbread. The students tried it and voted, and the flatbread won. And now that meal will be on the next month's menu. So it's a fun, it's a fun way to get the students involved and get their instant feedback. The next slide, this is some of our focuses for the school year. We have eight new terrific staff members that have already joined us this year. Unfortunately, we did lose a few to retirement. We're happy that they were able to retire, but now we gotta, you know, refill the ranks. And then as we look at going into next school year with the new middle school, it has two fully functioning kitchens. The need for staffing is going to continue to increase, as well as us doing more programming and things outside of just the, you know, the typical school lunch. So we're always looking for more staff. Another focus is the supply chain. You see at the grocery store, price continues to go up. Sometimes there's shortages on items. Working for Chartwell's, we are part of the largest food purchasing company in the world. So we have tremendous buying power and contracts with the large manufacturers, which has certainly alleviated some of the pains that, you know, smaller districts might have faced. Another thing that we're focused on this year is getting higher-quality ingredients. Having a strong financial program has allowed us to reinvest back into the program, not only with equipment, with more people, but also higher-quality ingredients, which we're excited about. Another focus, again, as always, is increased meal counts and more student engagement and faculty engagement. We really want to not just be in the cafeteria behind the serving line, but getting into the classrooms where it makes sense, doing things before or after school as much as we can, and then continuing to invest back into the food service program. So some of the different ways that we are currently, some of the different things that we're currently looking at and investigating, getting prices and quotes on, are on the next page. So a food truck, which is essentially a kitchen on wheels. This is just like the food truck that you're picturing in your head, drives around and serves meals. We'd be able to use this piece of equipment not only for special days or field days at the elementary schools on a regular basis, rotate it around between the schools. But this would also help us in the summer, when there's sites that don't have a kitchen accessible. The Savage Center here, it was an old middle school, but there's not a functioning kitchen. The rec department, who has their, the other pool, there's not a functioning kitchen that we could use there. A food truck is one of those pieces of equipment that we could roll up and start serving meals almost instantly. And then a variety of different things to reinvest into the program. And then again, just a selfless plug, as always, we have, I think, 47 fantastic staff members. These are people that live in town, have children in town. They're proud to work in the schools. And we're always looking for more, for more people. We're always taking applications and have seats to fill. So if you're interested, you love food, give us a call. And then one last selfless plug. On November 2nd, the town of Norwood and the school department is having a wellness fair. We'd love for everyone to come by. There's, I think, 40 or so different vendors and groups that are having a table and setup, and games, and prizes, and all kinds of stuff. So it's a whole family event. Swing by and ride the Smoothie Bike. And with that, I'll ask if there's any questions.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Norris? Teresa?
Thank you. Thank you Eli and Erin for all the great work we continue to do. Love the idea of food trucks. I think that definitely solves some of the challenges we've talked about previous summers, Eli, around getting access to food and, you know, throughout the community. So that's a great idea. That does relate to one of my questions. So you mentioned on your first slide that the summer meals this past year were down 3,000 meals? What does that translate into loss of funding?
So this is, the program itself, it operates as a break-even. There was no cost to the school district. So with the reduced meals, we purchased less food. Typically, we would also have less staff, but since we were spread out, we weren't able to really trim the staff as much. So there wasn't, there was no negative impact. The program still broke even. Typically, the summer program in previous years, it made a small profit. That just didn't happen this summer.
Okay. And the capital planning that you mentioned, that is all within like the revolving fund for food services? Or do you think there's funding from the operating budget you need?
Yeah. So the food service program, the School Nutrition Department would be able to cover every expense that was noted here. And I'm working with Mr. Mannion on looking at, you know, other creative ways to see if there's other ways that we can stretch the money further.
Okay, wonderful. And that applies also to the additional staff you'll need at the Cokely next year?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you so much.
We have the budget questions, a couple of things for sure. So. Any other questions from Mr. Norris or Ms. Long?
I'd just say, today, Mr. Norris and I took a tour of four of the facilities and looked at the operations. And I think, this is only my fourth month here, but I'd say this is a school nutrition program to really be proud of. The staff is incredible. They're putting so much dedication into it, and they're really a part of the school. You can tell they're really a part of the school, school community at each of their schools. The food looks really nutritious. It looks delicious. And the meal counts are going up, and there's a healthy balance. So I think there's a lot to be proud of with this.
Thank you.
Anything else? Wonderful. Well, thank you very much for coming and sharing with us. And we look forward to seeing you again in the spring.
See you then.
All right. So we're going to move on to our next appearance. We have Dr. Frazek here to talk to us about the CMS field trip. Oh, yes, Teresa. No, she's got to recuse herself.
So not only can I not participate, I have to turn off my camera and go off-screen. So I do not influence this discussion in any way. But I will listen, and I will rejoin when you move on.
We can text you when we're done.
You'll be in my background.
Thanks.
All right. So we have our annual trip to Washington DC that we restarted last year post-COVID, which is fantastic. Had one of the best trips that we've ever had. As you can see, a little bit of ours. So this is what we shared with our parents at information night. If you can go ahead and go to the next slide. So the company that we used is Hummingbird Student Travel. We chose them last year after kind of following that process of evaluating three or four different companies. They're local, they're based out of the Cape, and they were absolutely phenomenal. Like just super responsive, super flexible with us, with our parents, with our families. Just had an amazing experience down there. So we've literally been like, can we have that same person? And maybe that same bus driver? And so they were fantastic. Mr. Serenides will be taking on the leadership. I have made the sacrifice to go on the Puerto Rico trip this year. Taking one for the team. No, so Mr. Serenides is also a history teacher, before he was a dean of students and our assistant principal. So he's pretty excited to go. And then Kate Mooney is, she does all the legwork and the hard work and the putting kids together and putting this whole thing. So she does a great job. So we talked to the parents a little bit about why do we travel? And it's obvious, you know, some of the reasons are pretty obvious and out there. We study civics in grade eight, which is the biggest piece. So we think it's incredibly important for kids to see the seat of the government that they will be a part of for the remainder of their lives, and get to see it in action. For some students, this might be the first time that they get outside of the state of Massachusetts, perhaps even the town of Norwood. So it's really important. And I'm a strong believer that if we start them traveling young, they will continue to travel their whole lives. The itinerary is fantastic. If you've ever spent nine hours on a bus with 140, 150 eighth graders, there's really, I highly recommend it to everyone here. Like, you know, feel free to join us. But we have a lot of really exciting things. We go to the National Mall, we're adding the archives in. So the students study the Constitution as part of their civics program. So we want to go see the Constitution, see the Declaration of Independence. We go to the Capitol Building, do a tour of that. So see both the Senate and the House of Representatives. Couple of things that we are adding this year. One is the Holocaust Museum. We have tickets for that. Last year, we did the African-American Museum, which is great. So we kind of try and switch off between those two. The students also do study the Holocaust as part of their summer reading, and then fall introductory ELA unit, which is fantastic. They also study the Holocaust in grade six. And we added the International Spy Museum, which isn't just fun and awesome, if you've ever been there, but also really covers a lot of modern history, from like the 1930s on up to current times. We stop by the White House. They never let us in. We ask every time. It's hard no. We go to Arlington National Cemetery and do some other fun things. And then the second day, that's where we kind of do the Capitol, Congress. We spend a lot of time in the Smithsonian's. We were very excited. Brian Riley told me this today. The pandas are back at the National Zoo. They will be out of quarantine by the time we get there in May. So that's pretty exciting. We stop at the zoo before we head out for our, I don't know, seven-to-nine-hour journey back, which is great. So it's a really, it's a four days. They don't rest a lot until we drop them off at the hotel and make them wake up early in the morning. So it's really, really packed. Security is always a big issue. We have security at the hotel overnight. And that's not just for the students, it's also for the chaperones, so that we can sleep at night as well. Boys and girls are on separate floors. All of the chaperones are CMS teachers who are familiar with the students. We do kind of a 1 to 10, 1 to 12 ratio. And then we have a Hummingbird tour director with us. And we, you know, we do all those things that you need to do to make sure that students are safe for the trip. The cost this year is $9.25. It's about $100 more than it was last year. $50 of that is just increased costs. And then the other $50, because we added the Spy Museum, but we thought that was worthwhile to kind of add that highlight to the trip. And we do do scholarships. We offer a maximum $450 scholarship. Want to give a shout out to Tony Mazzucco, who goes out and gets a lot of money from the community for us. We were able to send, I want to say it was 16 students last year with scholarships. So that's a pretty exciting piece of this field trip. And that kind of covers like the payment plans and things like that. So try and help find as many ways as we can so that we have as many students as possible go. And students that do not attend the trip, they still attend school. Our teachers that are there, we kind of put them into two smaller teams. And they do a lot of fun activities around DC, around government, around learning. So it's not kind of a typical week of school for the rest of eighth grade that's there, usually around 100 kids, 90 to 100 kids. They do some more like interactive activities. So try and make it fun for them too. That is pretty much it.
Wonderful. Do we have questions for Dr. Frazek? I'm sure we do. I know in your packets, we do have the other documents that we would typically request for the field trip.
There should be the insurance waiver in there. We do the medical documents that we hand out. We do, we just had an informational meeting with the parents. We do a paperwork meeting with the parents around March, where they fill out all of the medical information, medication information, all of those sorts of things.
My question around the medical insurance is I've never seen a company specifically put zero. So my question, my question is, I know we're covered in our insurance, but I wonder, like, so the wonder that I have is you take a kid to an emergency room. Who's putting their credit card out? Right. And so I don't want it to be under, I don't want it to be your responsibility.
Yes. So yeah, they cover emergencies and then go through it that way, for the most part, because you're in a foreign, you're in a state outside of yours. Trying to think. We've had it happen a few times. And for the most part, it's either they just take the health insurance and then they bill to the parents. The nice thing about Massachusetts is all of our kiddos tend to have health insurance. So I want to say, for the most part, they just bill directly, because they'll have, we'll have the health insurance card. We have a copy of it with them.
That solves the problem.
Yeah, yeah. They have to, we make a photocopy of the health insurance card, and we have that in all the medical documents.
Well, all kids may have insurance. I'm not sure many eighth graders know what that insurance is.
What do you mean? 100% they do. No, they don't. They don't.
So as long as you have a copy that you have access, my concern was mainly around who's putting up a credit card.
Yeah. Hummingbird does the initial covering, if there is anything that they have to cover. The reason they have zero on their thing for that is that their medical insurance is really for if, for when they do international trips. Because then they, you can purchase medical insurance through them for international trips. Or if they are not lucky enough to be from the state of Massachusetts where that's, because yeah, we saw it on their screen too, and we were like, do you offer medical insurance? They're like, not here. And I went, oh, okay.
If I may, if the parents, if the parents don't provide their health insurance card, they do have to sign off saying that the district won't be liable for any costs associated with any medical events that happen. So Hummingbird will pay, and then directly, no question, pay it to the parent.
I was that kid who ended up costing, because I, what's insurance? What? No, of course not that my insurance card was mine.
No, we do that actually at that meeting at that night, so I can stand there at the copier and be like, I will take that, and here's a copy. And so we actually make the copies right then and there.
Great. Okay. I will date myself, because I'm really excited to see you guys go to the Holocaust Museum again. My eighth-grade trip to DC, it was the year it opened. Yeah, just aged myself big time. But it was really incredible. It was like a really, like, moving, incredible experience to see it.
Pretty sure I was a full-time teacher when it opened, for a good several years, so. Feeling young now. And Maria, thank you. But yes, it's always awesome.
This goes right along when I start telling people that Mrs. Derrane took me to my Spanish trip. She loves when I tell that story. 100%. Any other questions for Dr. Frazek around this field trip? All right. Does anyone want to make a motion to approve the field trip?
So moved.
Moved by Joan. Do I have a second? Second if I can. I was like, I hope so, because I only want to the person a second. And I'll take roll calls. So Kate? Joan?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. So that passes three to zero. Great. Thank you so much for coming and talking to us about it. Good luck. All right. So that brings us right up to our next agenda item, which is our superintendent report.
I just texted.
Oh, yes, right. We need Teresa back. Sorry.
I think she's, I just texted her.
She's there? Thank you. Okay, perfect. All right. So superintendent update. Take it away, Mr. Luff.
I appreciate it. Just a couple of things for district happenings here this time around. I just want to share that our EL department is putting together a multilingual family fair. It's being held on October 23rd from 6:00 to 7:30 PM at the Cokely. Wonderful experience for families to kind of get together and learn how to support one another. And I'm not sure if you've heard, but there is a wellness fair that's being held at Norwood High School on November 2nd. Really looking forward to the community coming and benefiting from an incredible collaboration between town partners, school partners, and to promote wellness in the community. I'd also like to congratulate Norwood High, who has earned a place on the AP School Honor Roll for the 2324 school year. It recognizes schools that have done outstanding work to welcome more students into AP courses and to support them on a path to call it success. So really, you know, it takes a huge effort in the, from the high school staff and our students who are obviously enrolling to achieve such an honor. So really proud of the high school for that. This is the month, really, where we're doing a tremendous amount of goal-setting around the district for everyone, for teachers. But also, I want to share for principals. I have actually sat with just about every principal now, and most of the central office staff and directors, really going through goal-setting meetings with them to identify professional practice, student learning, and school improvement goals, or district improvement goals, if you're a district administrator. We're taking those, those goals, and we're doing monthly walkthroughs within the buildings or within departments, and really looking at look fours to identify, hey, what do we want to see that will show that you're, you know, meeting this goal and implementing these thoughts in your everyday work. It's been a great way to see teaching and learning in the past month or two, actually, and really to help principals and directors and assistant superintendents enhance their leadership in their buildings. And you'll see that everywhere, and that's why I'm in buildings. I tell teachers, and I have the principals tell teachers when I'm there. I'm not there to evaluate them, right? I'm there to experience what's going on in the classroom and work with our principals to make everything better for our kids. I do want to report that we are in our three-year tiered-focused monitoring by DESI right now. Every three years, DESI will come out and they'll look for certain special education or civil rights indicators, where they'll review documents and, or different procedures or compliance policies that we have in the district. In this timing, they're focusing on special education and civil rights. So for special education, they're going to take a look at things like licensure, professional development, parent-student, community engagement. They're going to look at our facilities and our classrooms, kind of our oversight of how we look at everything, ensure things are happening, our time on learning, and equal access. And for the civil rights piece, they're taking a look at our bullying prevention intervention policies and procedures, student discipline, and physical restraint. They will do and have done already a pretty significant document review. Multiple members from the central office of Savage Center have done and collected that data for them and are going through that process. Now, there will be some onsite visits from the department. I'll do some interviews with some folks here, and they'll do space evaluations. So let's take a look at your special education spaces. Let's look at your buildings, make sure they're accessible. And then they'll also do a special education parent survey. They'll reach out to families to get a feel and an idea for how special that is. So, you know, we'll use this when we get the report back in the spring, along with our special, our student service program review that we're looking at for RFP to kind of coordinate any changes that we need to make to ensure compliance, but also the best services we can provide for kids. I also want to talk about, you know, I've been sharing that I'm trying to, have been trying to get together a district-wide safety team for quite some time now. We actually coordinated that team just last week for the first session. Members of that team include folks from the police department, the Members of that team include folks from the police department, the fire department, transportation, elementary, middle and high school principals, business, technology, HR and facilities, all to really have kind of a conversation about, um, the SEOP, right? The, the standard emergency operating protocols and procedures to ensure that we can update them, modify them as needed in a small group. Um, you know, we can, we'll debrief events after they occur. So it's really great to, you know, if we have an event, um, which is not great, it's really good to go through, process through what went right, you know, what didn't go right, what can we do differently, what changes do we have to make? Um, these folks will disseminate information to buildings and other staff as things do come up and, and we have these conversations. Um, provide structures and supports to operationalize the SEOP, which is about a hundred and thirty-page document that's kind of given to schools. And we really needed to figure out a way to say, one of those really important things, how can we get them out to staff to make sure they're prepared in case of an emergency? Um, to plan training exercises and to prioritize certain procedures. So at our last meeting, just as an example, um, we talked a lot about clear and consistent communications. You know, we have a lot of protocols around what we say when we say run, hide, fight, what we say when we say secure your classroom or evacuation, or secure the building or reverse evacuation, um, you know, and the real idea behind many of these is the information that comes along with those particular, uh, those alerts. So if you're securing your classroom for a medical emergency, it's we're securing the classroom, please stay in your classroom. We have a, you know, a, a medical emergency in the hallways. You know, continue to work as, as, as normal. So we're working on those particular, um, protocols right now. And we're going to actually look at some different ways to, you know, secure your classroom sounds like it's a, it's a real safety emergency. So we're looking at different ways to make that some softer language. We're actually working with our folks from the Coakley Project to get a list of different things that we can use. Um, uh, uh, different language protocols that we can use, um, that might be softer, but also give us what we need to ensure that we're safe and secure. So went through that, um, and you can see those are the five really that we're really going to focus on working on right now, uh, to make sure that we're, that we're solid there. It's not that we don't have them. We do have them. We just want to make sure that we're, we're rolling them out appropriately. Uh, and we also looked a lot at Coakley's safety recommendations as a team, uh, this team to get up, get some ideas from the elementary, from the high school, um, uh, and different departments to make sure that when we're making recommendations for safety at Coakley, that they're aligned with district. Um, and I should also say that much of this work is being done so we can be consistent district-wide. So what we say at the middle school and determine at the middle school for communications will be similar to what we're doing at the high school, the elementary school and Savage and so on. So that was last week and we'll meet again monthly. Um, I won't share too much about this information just because it's, um, obviously confidential in terms of safety procedures. Uh, if the school committee ever does want to have more of a conversation about it in the executive session, I'm happy to, happy to do that at some point. Um, I put tech quarterly updates in here. I'm not sure if you've gotten these in the past, but, uh, per their, um, the collaborative agreement, this is the education collaborative, which we are part of, there to provide a quarterly update to the school committee. So this is just that. Um, really just talking here about a thirteen percent enrollment increase here, uh, for, um, Tech Campus School, Tech High School and Tech Academy. And the most notable obviously is Tech Campus School. Um, they relocated Tech Phoenix Academy from the Plimpton Building in Walpole uh, to Robbins Road in Walpole, which was the former Johnson Middle School. And the Tech Academy is expanded to serve grades six to twelve, uh, with a separate space for middle and high school students. Most notably for you, um, there is, actually there is a new elementary behavior program, um, uh, in response to member feedback, uh, for grades K through two. Uh, you know, there are students, uh, in the region that obviously have some behavioral, uh, concerns or, or needs, uh, at a very young grade level. So Tech has created a program to assist us with that. Um, and one of the things that will be coming back to you at some point is, um, a consideration request for two districts, uh, one King Philip Regional, which is just the high school, uh, King Philip Regional High School, and the Sharon Public Schools to join Tech. Um, there was a vote of the Tech Board to, uh, allow that process to begin. Um, and we did that. And so they're going to be drafting an amended agreement. There's going to be a timeline where the school committee, uh, you will have to vote on, on those, the entries of those two folks. We'll have more information when that comes. It should be around January, I think. And that is my superintendent update.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Love on the update? Teresa?
Thank you. Um, two things. So first, on the CEO, um, Mr. Love, you just said if the school committee wants more discussion. And, uh, I think it's on our long-term agenda, um, that we do. And there are some things that are carried over from last spring when there was that situation at the Coakley. Um, Emery and Tim, do you have an idea of when we might schedule that executive session?
I think now that we've had the safety committee meeting, we can do that sooner than later. I, um, I wanted to make sure that they weighed in on some of the communication pieces, um, so I could bring you recommendations when we do that. I think in terms of just the conversation, a school committee, I just, for me, it was just making sure it was in an executive session. That's all. Um, so happy to get that on the agenda sooner than later now that we've had that team meet and kind of, we can have conversations about our recommendations and where to go.
So maybe the next, maybe the next school committee meeting or the one, or the November one?
Maybe the November one. I think the next one, you're going to be determining the elementary study.
Might be a long one on the next one.
Um, are we doing it differently than we've done in the past, Emery? Are we not bringing in the whole admin team to meet with us as we review it?
So I think at this point, I mean, I guess that would just depend on if this meeting is to review the SEO P or just to get some more specifics and updates on what the, um, task force is working on.
Well, the pleasure of the committee.
Yeah. So I guess we can, we can kind of, I, I, I mean, I assume we can discuss that since it's scheduling offline. But I think that would just be, you know, the, yeah, the will of the committee, whether we want like the full, like we would normally do, like, not normally, like we have done, um, when we've gotten the whole, um, update, or if this is, um, a piece of that and we do that later in the year. I don't remember when we did it, uh, what time of the year we did it last time.
It was last fall.
Was it at the fall? I couldn't, I can't, I couldn't remember. I, I do remember I was, um, sick and tried to quarantine myself in the back of the rooms.
I mean, to be honest, um, if you're, you know, I mean, to bring the entire managerial team out might be a lot for them. I, I would, I would be happy to invite the members of the team that are coming to this crisis team and that might just be a better way to have a more formal.
It was a standalone meeting. Just, it wasn't after, after a school committee meeting or something. It was its own, yeah. A separately scheduled SEO P, um, executive session and, and all the members of the different departments and facilities and, um, and the chief came and things like that.
But I don't know if they had the meeting, I feel like in the past we have not, we would have attended the meeting that just, right?
No, because the, the task force that wrote the SEO P, we didn't have, we were not, we didn't attend that. We, we, it, after it was, it was at, we came together, right?
No, the only thing I'm saying is that my understanding is that in the past, there haven't been two of these types of meetings. It's just been one meeting that included the school committee as well. And so I, I don't, I'm just offering historical tidbits.
Yeah, no, no, absolutely. Like, yeah, the one, the only, the only one that I've been involved in so far has been like the yearly review, right, of the SEO P? And that's what I guess I'm, that's what I guess I'm asking the committee of, do you want us to schedule the yearly review at this time? Or do you, would you rather like hear what the, uh, task force is working on and as they work towards changes? And once they're implemented, we get the yearly, like a yearly review of the new changes.
I'm fine with the yearly review. I'm with the, the updated changes. I've never been super excited about the fact that we've been given a copy of the plan. So.
Um, Kate?
Uh, I was just kind of going to echo the first part of what Joan was saying, that if they're working on refining it, uh, the plan, then let's hear about that. Um, it sounds like it's, they're working in progress at this point. I'd rather, um, have a, a more formulated strategy to respond to.
Teresa?
Yeah, I think I, I think I agree with the caveat that if things are being worked on and put into place, we should review it before they're put into place. And also, um, in March, we did have that executive session post one of the situations at the Coakley, excuse me, where we did ask for specifics to be reported back to us. Um, I think I, obviously Mr. Love, you were not here at the time, but I think I shared those minutes with you. Um, those things feel pretty urgent to me. Um, so maybe there's more than one meeting that we have to have this year.
Yeah, I think, I, I think I agree. I think what, what is formulating in my head is that we do discuss this at an executive session after one of the next two school committee meetings. And then we later in the year plan like the actual bigger, all of us get together and talk about what changes are going to be implemented and kind of review at that point. Does that sound fair? Okay.
And I'll continue to review those minutes and, and, and we'll get those answers to you so you have that, that data.
Great. Um, any other, oh, go ahead. Yep.
There's just one other kind of question. So going back to the, um, AP, um, honor roll, um, first of all, that is amazing. And I'm really happy and excited to see that. Um, and I just want to congratulate Dr. Galligan and, and Mrs. Durrain because in the tenure that I've been on the school committee, um, they have actively been working, uh, towards this. Um, so this is definitely, you know, recognition of their hard work. Um, and just so the school committee is aware, um, you know, things that we have approved have also led to this. Um, this has been part of the school improvement plan at the high school for a number of years. Um, Dr. Galligan, I think over the last three years started to have budget items in his budget line. Um, so all the kids who are in an AP course, um, it is paid for by the district to take that AP class. Um, and that is part of his like strategic budgeting. And I think that should be recognized because if that was not in our budget, it is possible that perhaps he would not have this, um, honor and recognition. Um, and I think the other part that we approved at some point in the spring, um, is that the high school is doing a training, um, with Mass Insight on training AP teachers on diversifying who is in their classroom. Um, and I think we should recognize that because that is something our audit called out for us a number of years ago. Um, but with that recognition, I do have a request that my colleagues agree, um, we have never gotten a report on the AP classes. And, um, I would love to hear more if Mr. Love, Dr. Mina, Dr. Galligan, school committee, if you agree. Um, it would be really helpful to know how many kids are taking AP classes, how many AP classes we offer, and then also what do those AP scores look like?
I can make a request with Dr. Galligan before I, yep.
I, I, I think that sounds like a great idea because, you know, it'll highlight not only for us, but for, um, you know, parents and, and the public, you know, what, what our offerings are and just, I mean, why we got this, this type of, uh, recognition. Because, you know, what, what do we offer and how many kids are taking it and taking advantage of it? So I think it's great. I, I like it personally.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else on the superintendent update? Wonderful. So we're going to move on to our next items on the agenda. So we have come to our most riveting section of the agenda, budget. Um, so the first item on the agenda, um, is the budget subcommittee update. Um, Teresa, do you want to take that one?
I do. I, I'm sad I'm not riveting, but I think you're riveting, so.
It's riveting to you and me, but I don't know how much to everybody else who.
I love it.
Oh goodness, um, if it's looking at the, Emery, I'll combine the budget subcommittee and the BBC update, um, together.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, perfect. So, um, in the packet, uh, so you know what you're looking at, you have a copy of our approved minutes from our September eighteenth and October seventh subcommittee meeting. Um, we did also meet on October eleventh, but we haven't yet approved those minutes, so we didn't share those out yet. Um, and then also in the packet under the BBC update, you have access to all of the material that we reviewed at the BBC meeting on October seventh. Uh, so last week was a pretty budget-filled week, riveted subcommittee meetings and, and the BBC meeting. Um, the, the budget subcommittee meeting on October seventh was really just to get ready for our BBC meeting later that day. Um, I'll talk about the BBC meeting first. Um, you do have, again, in your packet, all the material we saw. Um, there is a five-year forecast as of October third in your packet. Um, this is put together from our colleagues in the town, um, Mr. Mizuko and Jeff O'Neil, um, the finance director there. Um, and what you'll see is the FY twenty-five approved budget, but then the forecast for twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine and thirty. And then in addition to that spreadsheet, you have another spreadsheet, um, that is titled Town of Norwood Fiscal FY twenty-six Track Balance Sheet. And it's that one that I want to focus on. So if you see that one in your pocket, um, you'll see that a proposal, and it's only a proposal, it's only a starting point. There's a lot of things BBC has to talk about. Um, what Tony and Jeff had put together was that if we infuse the operating budget with free cash, and that's important, that's a big if, um, if we infuse the operating budgets with free cash, um, there could be room for the school budget to grow by eight percent. There could be room for the general government budget to grow by six percent, and there could be room for the facilities budget to grow by four percent. If we do not infuse our operating budget with any free cash or FY twenty-six, then due to a structural deficit that we have, um, we would be looking at reducing budgets. Um, and this piece isn't on that sheet. It was just talked about. Um, so our budget right now for FY twenty-five, um, is sixty-one million, two hundred eleven thousand and three dollars. And Mr. Manning is going to take us through what that looks like for quarter one in a few minutes. Um, but if we do not infuse our budget with any free cash, we will have to cut all budgets next year by two percent. And if the school budget is cut by two percent for next year, that is a reduction of one point two million. That burns our budget down to just over sixty million. And this is what in the spring, um, Mr. Wells had talked to us a lot about when he was projecting that there may be cuts and there may be a deficit. Um, currently, uh, the town has certified free cash in the amount of twenty-nine, uh, point eight million. That was talked about at BBC. Um, the twenty-nine point eight million of free cash will be talked about more next week at town meeting. So for those of you who are also town meeting members, um, four million dollars of free cash rolled over from last year. So we started this year off with four million dollars in free cash. Twelve million dollars in free cash came in through building permits. Uh, seven million dollars in free cash came in through investment earnings. Some of those investment earnings are from the Coakley Project. You may remember we borrowed the money upfront and now interest is accruing. Um, three million of that free cash was from unspent money in the general government budget. Some of that from snow and ice, some of that from positions that they needed to hire and didn't fill. Um, I do not know where the rest of the free cash came from. Um, that's nineteen, twenty, two hundred two fifty. So I just give you twenty-six million of the twenty-nine point eight. I don't know where the other three point eight came from. That wasn't discussed at BBC and I don't have access to that. Um, so again, where we're at right now is we have the baseline, structural deficit, possibility of needing to reduce all budgets by two percent, but then the discussion of because there is free cash, part of the BBC process is deciding how that free cash could be used. Um, but the finance commission is also really looking at how that discussion of free cash happens and how much of that goes to town meeting. So there are some processes and decisions coming up in future BBC meetings about how we're going to talk about and allocate free cash. Um, I will tell you that at next week's town meeting, um, there is nine million dollars of this free cash that is up for vote and debate at next week's meeting. Um, so before I go further, let me just pause there. I know that's a lot of numbers and a lot of like if then, then this type of stuff. So any questions on those spreadsheets or those numbers?
Joan?
So I have a question, honestly, about the spreadsheets or the numbers, but I just want to pause and say, um, were we level funded for this year?
We were not level funded. You may remember that the level funded request, the number that we were given by Dr. Thompson and Dr. Wells had our budget increasing by thirteen percent. We did not get that thirteen percent to be, uh, well, let me, let me set aside. So to be level serviced, right? Yes.
Right.
So a level service budget would have cost us thirteen percent. We did not get that.
We were essentially level funded though and not level serviced. Correct?
Well, our budget went up.
Yeah. We had to cut things that we had last year, right?
We had to cut everything.
That's what I'm getting at. Whether we wanted that to be called, we, we were not level services funded. We could not maintain the same level of services from last year to this year because due to inflation, those prices went up and our budget did not match that.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So we're already operating at a deficit.
Yes.
And so now we're talking about if we don't get any of that free cash infused in, there's even more of a deficit. I'm emphasizing the fact that we are, this is not a new, this is not a, a, the first cut to our budget. We have already made a cut in order to, um, because of inflation, which affects everybody, including us. Um, so I just want to make that, that part clear. Um, I also didn't hear anything in the budget balancing about the stabilization funds. Um, so I understand the dangers of. So I understand the dangers of infusing free cash into a operating budget, but what about refilling the stabilization fund budgets?
We did talk about it.
Or circuit breaker?
Yeah.
Yeah, we did begin that discussion. We put it out there for future discussion. We did not come to any resolution at the last meeting. We meet again as budget balancing on November 14th. And what I'm really happy and excited is what happened at that meeting. BBC, those of us who are elected officials, had asked our staff, our admin, so Mr. Love and Mr. Mannion along with Mr. Mizuko and Mr. O'Neil to work together. And maybe Mr. Love wants to talk more about this. But as my colleagues know, we've been talking over the years about Medicaid reimbursement, coming to schools, and also about how chapter 70 funding, which is education funding from the state, how that is allocated. And as BBC members, we've just been going around and around with that resolution. But what Maya had asked and the rest of BBC agreed is if the administration can work together and bring the proposal and bring that proposal back to us on November 14th to discuss and hopefully approve about going forward, how that money will be allocated.
Yep. So Mr. Mizuko and I have not scheduled it yet, but we will be getting it together and looking forward to making those recommendations at BBC.
And we're making a recommendation that we're refilling the stabilization funds that we drained.
So we haven't drained, so are you talking about like the special education? We haven't drained it. It has not been, it was...
We're not taking any money out?
Not yet. That was part of our budgeting for last year. That was, that was expected. But I think we may get some more update later. But that is certainly a priority is to make sure we don't have to take that, especially if there's additional free cash. It was already looking like we may not have to spend that perhaps with the way that the actuals are...
Mr. Mannion will talk about the first quarter report and kind of projections for the end of the year.
I don't want to take away the thunder.
And probably see that that will not happen.
Okay, can we start thundering? Because I'm confused as to why we had to make cuts if we're now not anticipating that we're...
Well, we were anticipating. I mean, we were anticipating. So, yeah.
So Joan...
See where I'm going?
Yep.
I know where you're going. I know what you're asking. So Mr. Mannion is going to take us through the quarter one report, which is just the first quarter. If we hit the sped offset, which in the FY '25 budget, we currently said that $550,000, $550,000 could be an offset to the FY '25 budget if needed. But that's something that we wouldn't hit until the end. I did bring that up at BBC because as you may remember, there was an additional half a million that was discussed last spring of do we need it or do we not? And at the time, the majority of the school committee didn't want to ask for it. But part of the conversation with BBC last February was that if we got to a point in the school year where we needed that money, the FinCom would talk about it and possibly support asking for it later. So I did bring that up last week. And basically it was if we get to the spring, it's too late to put anything on the warrant for this town meeting. If we get to the spring and it looks like we wanted to ask for that money to protect this bed stabilization, we could possibly ask for it in the spring.
If, right, and if needed.
If needed.
Yeah. I was trying, yeah, I was trying to put that gently. Like, so we will, I mean, that was going to be a last resort, as it was, to spend that, to spend down that.
But essentially a planned, a planned last resort. I recall looking at budget stuff that we approved where we're not funding everything and we were dipping into our stabiliz, we were projected to dip into our stabilization fund.
Yes, yes, and you're remembering correctly from the spring. I think after we're going to do this budget report, there...
Start thundering, Mr. Mannion.
Prior to what we talked about on Friday in our budget, our budget subcommittee meeting was reviewing the stats that Mr. Mannion is going to present tonight and asking a lot of these questions. I think you'll see that Mr. Love and Mr. Mannion have a different approach to some things than what we heard about in the spring. But to your question, to your point, Joan, I did bring that up. And we will continue to talk about protecting circuit breaker, stabilization funds, both for the school and on the town side.
Yeah, and just to reiterate, because you were talking about stabilization funds, there is already even on the town meeting warrant for this, for the fall to transfer monies into the general stabilization fund. I think $2 million, is that what's on the...
I think it shows about $2 million.
$2 million. So there is an effort and awareness with the different groups to use this, you know, windfall basically to try to...
The general stabilization fund is not, does not go to the schools. It's not for, that's for, that's for, that's the rainy day fund for the town. That's like if we go over in health insurance or some of those types of things, right?
Well, that's schools. I mean...
Yes, so that's schools. But that's the, it's like, I'm, I'm trying to, that's a shared cost.
No, no, and I understand what you're saying, like protecting the school...
Special, yeah, the special ed stabilization fund. Because that's, I'm asking specifically about that. I'm asking, I guess, Mr. Mannion, in your thunder, what I'm hoping to hear is why we don't, why the special stabilization fund is even continuing to be projected to be utilized? And why if we have all of this free cash and we're doing much better than expected, we ended up having, we're going to have to cut services next year? Because the folks who get cut are our gen, our genites.
So just to kind of put on, so we did actually bring up, Teresa brought up the idea of a general education stabilization fund that actually we had talked about in one of, in one of our subcommittee meetings that Mr. Mannion had mentioned was, was something he had seen done. So we did kind of start that. We didn't have much of a conversation around it, but it was just something that we kind of threw out there that, you know, maybe we create other stabilization funds, you know, with this money. Because we do understand, and I know that there's, there's two schools of thought, obviously, that, you know, and it's a very sane and sustainable practice to not look at your free cash to be able to supplement your budget because obviously it's not going to be there from year to year. So there is definitely some of those in our BBC meetings that really are staunchly against using it to...
I agree.
And so they would love to see us look, you know, they really want us to look at this like 2%, you know, we're looking at what we actually, the budget in a $1.2 million decrease because, but... So then there's obviously the other side and how much of that we can supplement with and infuse that, that free cash into to...
With a $29, with $29 million surplus.
You kind of can't not.
Park that puppy and just live off the interest. You do like, like the interest off of that would cover all of the cuts to the budgets, right? Like, I'm not talking about, yes, grab the free cash. I'm talking about what are you supposed to do with the windfall? You put it in your savings account, which for a town is a stabilization.
And that is, and that is one of the conversations that we, that we started to have. And as interesting that you said that too, because I think Teresa mentioned $7 million of that free cash is because we did borrow and put it in the savings account and now that's...
Proving my point entirely.
Well, I think, I think too, Joan, for our purpose, we're going to create a level service budget, a budget that works for our kids. And that's what we're going to present, right? So we're going to, obviously, a new fresh look at the budget. You'll see what the fresh look has shown, I think, in Mr. Mannion's report. And certainly we'll present a budget that is not just level service, but also an improvement budget that you'll get to decide what, you know, what we can use and we'll work with the town to support.
Are you talking about the budget to replace the budget we already voted on?
I'm talking about FY, I'm talking about FY '26 as we move into next fiscal year. We will talk, Mr. Mannion will talk about what our very preliminary projections are for the end of the year based on the quarter one report. And I think you'll be relatively pleased with the information you get when he thunders.
But we already voted on a budget that did not provide level services for this upcoming year, correct?
Correct.
Which is fiscal year '26, correct?
'25.
'25.
We're still in '25 in the fall?
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry. I get the...
I know.
I get calendar fiscal and then my work has a separate? And, okay, sorry, there's too many calendars. Okay.
Kate?
Put this to your last point, Joan. Teresa was saying, or let me, I just was, I'm going to spend the one number question. Teresa, you were saying to Joan's point about this year's level services, in the spring, there is an opportunity to ask for some of that if we need it.
In the spring, there could be the opportunity. I don't want to put the words in anybody's mouth that they said we definitely could, but if we...
And what would precipitate that would be like a staff, staffing issues for the most part?
Yes, staffing issues or if we feel like we're going to have to dip into that stabilization fund, this month fund, and we don't want to, then given that there's this other free cash, could that cover it? So we preserve and protect our sped stabilization fund going forward. Joan, I think a lot of your questions will be answered by Sean and also then pivot into more of a discussion because there are things that I wanted us to talk about once we get the quarter one report. So it's a little out of order, I suppose. But for BBC, just so everybody knows, again, November 14th is our next meeting. At that meeting, as I said, Mr. Love, Mr. Mizuko, Mr. Mannion, Mr. O'Neil will be bringing to us ideas around Medicaid and chapter 70. Maya, who's our chair at BBC, also said we would talk a little bit more about FTEs because we know that that's kind of like a lingering question now that our override pledge is over. And then as BBC, we have committed that we will wrap up all of our work by February 6th. You may remember at the last school committee meeting, we approved our FY '26 budget calendar. And what you also have in your packet is the finance commission's FY '26 budget calendar. There are a number of dates. In addition to our budget subcommittee, in addition to our BBC work, there are a number of dates that Tim, Anne Marie, Sean, and I will go to the finance commission. So you have access to all those dates. I also add them to our shared Google folder. But in regards to our last subcommittee meeting, I think handing it over to Mr. Mannion now is the way to go because a number of the items under both budget, full business, and new business, we talked about in the last subcommittee meeting.
And if I can just add a couple of things about the forecast from the BBC. You know, any forecast is based on the assumptions that are made. So I don't know if this clears up anything or not, but that two-year forecast, it assumes an 8% increase on the school side, a 6% on the municipal side. So those are some of the assumptions that are embedded. And the other main, a lot of the revenues are assumed to carry forward at, you know, conservative rates. But there's, the use of one-time funds, it's always, when you do assumption like this, they're starting from the use of no one-time funds in the next fiscal year. And the override stabilization is ending, the last year is FY '25, and they use 2.2 million of free cash for FY '25. So when you assume all of that one-time funds go away in FY '26, that's what's setting up this sort of deficit that they're projecting.
And they just want to show it?
They want to show it so that...
Because they want to show the structural deficit, right? Just to see what we, we did not put any free cash in.
Yeah.
We will advocate for our budgets.
I mean, I'm well aware, as part of the override campaign, I'm well aware what a structural deficit is. I'm well aware that you don't use everything using free cash. But I'm also well aware that when you win lottery, you stick that in your savings account.
Yeah. And that's really, we'll, we'll continue to fight for that in BBC for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm not saying we go nuts. I'm saying stick it in our savings account.
Should I share?
I was thinking, let's just build another school with it. I mean, but I mean, let's take 20.
Sure.
I'm just kidding.
All right, so...
Joan, if you could, could you just go in and make it bigger, just go to slideshow?
Is that it? I thought I did. Oh, maybe I need to do the...
Yeah, from the actual tab itself.
I see. All right, there we go.
Can I just, can I just say too, sorry, just before you get started, Joan?
Go ahead.
I want to note that this is obviously a first quarter update, first pass. Sean will share that. So, you know, you're going to see some good projections. I just want to remind folks that this is the first quarter and the projections are always, you know, subject to change. So I don't want people to get really excited about the projection because it's first quarter. That's all.
Thank you.
And I did want to also, really quick before you start, because we just talked about it quickly before, I think Kate and Teresa joined remotely, that there are a couple of updates in the version that Mr. Mannion is going to project. So just in case somebody sees like a, an up, something that's updated. And he said he will send that out to us after the meeting. There's just a couple minor, right?
Yes, there were a couple of updates, mostly on the circuit breaker page. And I think that'll be provided for you either shortly or if it hasn't already. And I can, I can remind you again when that comes up. So yes, this is the first, first quarter projection, the first projection we have on the FY '25 budget. We've gone through every line of the budget essentially, looked at the costs, looked at the budget to date. We've projected things forward. It is a first quarter projection. Things will, will get more precise as the year goes on. Second quarter, I find, with the school district, gives you a really good look at the school year because things are very fluid throughout the fall, like hiring especially, which is the largest cost for school districts, is still going on. Not every position is usually filled right at the end of September. So this forecast does include July, August, and September, includes the summer months. It includes all of the new contracts which have been settled. It includes all of that turnover of staff. It includes, you know, a large, a huge amount of stuff happens between when the budget was planned and when you get into a new school year. And this is essentially the first take on all of that. So I'm happy to report that, that right now, our school budget is in a good place. The budget as approved was $61.2 million. As of the end of September, we have spent 7.1 million or 12% of that budget. And as of the end of September, encumbered another 50.2 million. So in total, 57.3 million of our budget, or 94%, has been spent or encumbered. A large part of that encumbrance is because in Norwood, we encumber the salaries. Salaries are the largest expense in a school district. And because that's all encumbered, most of it is either spent or encumbered at this point in time. But we'll continue to watch as we do quarterly updates, the change in that spent amount, the 12% as we go through each quarter. When we did this projection, we found that we do need to adjust some of our encumbrances because of this change in the contracts. We're still sort of coming up to date to make sure that our payroll encumbrances are actually accurate. And we also looked at other types of salary expenses such, that aren't typically encumbered. Some of those include longevity payments, which happen in the middle of the year. So when we, and we have a detailed salary projection, we looked at all of that. We still forecast forward another 9.5 million, including the salaries that we needed to adjust, including spending on all different types of things, including tuition, all types of expenditures, another 16%. And we have remaining budget offsets and credits of 6.6%. These were, for the most part, planned credits. So the largest part of that is, is circuit breaker, which we'll talk about later. But in that credit of 6.6 million, we have a $5.4 million credit for out-of-district tuition, which was planned, and that's circuit breaker. We have another $228,000 for transportation out of circuit breaker. We're using some of the bus fees as planned for $150,000, as well as $150,000 in some grant transfers in McKinney-Vento credits. And we are using $550,000 of the sped stabilization, which was assumed in the budget. So we're currently keeping that assumption. And in addition, there's a credit of $125,000 for compensated absences now that the school committee has voted to use the town compensated absences. We're moving the costs that we have to date over to the, assuming that we're going to move those costs over to the town. At the end of all of this, we're basically projected to spend 60.2, 60.2 million, or 98%. And at this point in time, a balance, we're projecting a balance of just under $1 million. So $999,000 or $998,000. So the next slide is a slide that we've shown in the past. It's, it shows the budget by major, what we call DESE functions. These are functional categories that we report to the Department of Education. And what you're seeing is each of those functional categories, which include district leadership and admin, instructional services, other school services, operations and maintenance, benefits and fixed charges, community services, and programs with other districts. You can see the revised budget, the expended amount, the encumbered amount, what we forecast, the credits, and then the final projection and balance. So when we look at this, we're seeing a slight overage in the district leadership and administration. It's mostly due at this point to some projected legal costs and some vacancies that we have. On instructional services, which is the largest cost area, so you can see that's 78% of the budget. That's teaching, that's anything instructional related, including instructional supplies, including teacher salaries. It's the largest part of our budget. A small overage of just under $200,000. And when you look at how big that area, that, that is really only an overage of 0.4%. Which, that's pretty impressive when you consider accommodating all of the changes in staff or turnover, accommodating all of the contracts that we have. or turnover, accommodating all of the contracts that have happened, and when all those shifts have happened, we're within .4% of our budget on that large area. Other school services includes things like athletics, transportation, and we're, we're showing a surplus there, mostly due to some of these credits, the bus fee transportation credit, the McKinny-Vento and grants credits. Other areas are very small. The benefits and fixed charges is, has a surplus, although it's a very small area, due to the compensated absences moving over to the, to the town. And then lastly, is the programs with other school districts, that's primarily our out-of-district tuitions, and you'll see that on another chart, but we're currently under the budgeted projection for placements. We do have some contingencies, but we're projecting a surplus of $660,000. This shows sort of the makeup of that projected surplus of just under $1 million, and sort of shows the main categories that that surplus is made of. This is another way to look at the budget as it, as it's sliced into different categories. I actually find that this one, you need to look at from the bottom up. So if you look at the bottom, payroll versus expenditures, in this case, what we're really talking about is expenses. So it's really payroll versus non-payroll. And as most school districts are salary-intensive, it's mostly, you know, delivered by teachers and staff. 83% of our budget is, is going to be payroll, and the non-payroll expenses are 17% of the budget, including things like supplies, equipment, transportation, tuition, contracted services. When you look at each of those areas, if you go up, you can see that in the payroll category, 65% or $32.5 million is general education, and 15.2 million is special education, and about 2.3 million is English learning learners' education. And that's to be expected because of the way the teachers are staffed and the way the staff is set up. And then when you look at the top, which are the non-payroll expenditures or expenses, it sort of flips because special education, 6 million, is 62% of that total, general education is 3.8, and English learners is 76,000. So with special education having a high cost for transportation and out-of-district costs, that area in the expense land is, is greater than general education. So now we'll look at some of the funding sources, we'll take a preview of some of the other sources. So this is a good slide that we looked at on the fourth quarter report. It's a good way of just keeping track of the town warrant items that are open, because there are quite a few that had to do with schools. Fully spent are the capacity study, there was a sped OOD and transportation warrant, all spent. There was a school of origin transportation warrant, which was essentially a loan on some monies that were going to come to us from the state, that was spent. There was an IT capital one that was done last spring, and that was fully spent, and there was a van replacement capital of $532,000. All of those are closed and spent. With balances, we have a pupil transportation warrant that still has a balance of 200, basically $210,000. The intent there is to allow that to be returned to the town, and we are asking for five new mini-buses at the town meeting next week, and we're just saying that we're asking for $545,000 for the mini-buses, but we're giving up this $210,000 back to the town that we didn't spend for transportation. They're all within the transportation realm. The superintendent search is over, so that's essentially finished. There's a student services study, which we just advertised the RFP, I think we're speaking about that later. We're going to be getting responses within a two-week timeline, so that's actually something we're actively working on. There's an enrichment pilot, which was for Coaching for Change. That is almost fully spent, except for $3,000, so we expect to fully spend that town warrant as soon as we get another bill from Coaching for Change. The extended day, discussed that, that that was to set them up as they moved to the rec department. And then lastly, there's another IT account that's under emergency connectivity. I know Mr. Kidd has plans for these, you know, is still strategizing, but he's well aware that there's $175,000 available on that warrant item.
Theresa?
Yeah, sorry, just before Mr. Mannion was on, I want to clarify that that remaining $26,190 for the superintendent search, that is not available to us, that needs to be returned to the town.
Okay.
I appreciate you not doing the search right now, too.
Yeah. I think we were waiting, right, just to make sure that all legal expenses and everything had been against that account, and I think we're at that point, right, where everything is, it's been buttoned up, it's been tied up, we're done, right?
I think so, we've been, yeah. We've been watching, it was the same amount in the fourth quarter, so I think, like you said, Theresa, that would, Ms. Stewart, that would go back to the town. This is an overview of Circuit Breaker. So Circuit Breaker is the large state funding source for special education. You know, you file claim of all your costs at the end of a school year. This includes your out-of-district costs, but it also includes high cost in-district placements. The concept of Circuit Breaker, they set a foundation level, and once that level is reached, the state starts to fund via the Circuit Breaker after you've exceeded that level. So there are high-cost special education placements. And this is a comparison of the two years, FY '24, which is now finished, to FY '25. This is the slide that did have some revisions. So looking at FY '24, we carried over 2.7 million from FY '23. So by, by state law, you can carry over up to a year's worth of your Circuit Breaker funding. So last fiscal year, we had a carry-forward of 2.7 million, and if you go down the FY ' '24 column, you can see that the current-year funds last year, the regular Circuit Breaker, was funded to Norwood at 3.7 million. That was funded at a 75%, which is the maximum rate on instruction and tuition, and the transportation piece, which is relatively new from the Student Opportunity Act, was funded at 58%. So the way this funding works is, once the state gets all of its claims, it funds first the tuition and instructional, and sees if they can get as close to 75% reimbursement as they can. After that, they look at what's available in all the claims, and they see how far they can fund the transportation. Last year, Norwood as well filed for extraordinary relief, and that was a really, I think that was a really wise move, mood, move, I should say, $611,000, which came straight to Norwood schools. That was like additional funding just by doing that, and that really served the district well, and had to be spent last fiscal year. And then in addition, Norwood schools received $504,000 in the reserve relief. That is essentially a prepayment on the next year's claim. So what they do when we get to '25 and they look at our claim, they're going to subtract that $504,000. So we received it last fiscal year, but it's essentially part of our current-year claim. When all is said and done, as we reported in the fourth quarter, we, we did quite well with our carry-forward. We moved as much funds during that closeout as we could. We were at one point at $2.6 million, and we were able to finally carry forward just over $3 million. So we put ourselves in a good financial place, you know, for this coming school year. Now, so when we look at FY '25, we do have a carry-forward available to us from 24 of $3 million. The current-year initial projection from the state is that Norwood will be essentially at a claim of $4.8 million, but we have to subtract out that reserve relief. It's about a $1 million increase in our claim, and that's all due to last year's tuitions, which had that 14% OSD rate increase. So all that, a lot of that rate increase comes back a year later in the Circuit Breaker claim. And then when we add our projections down below, so available to us this year, total 7.4 million, 7.3 million. We look at the projections, which are built into that projection that you just saw. We're going to transfer $5.4 million in tuition, we're going to transfer $228,000 in transportation, and we're also going to allow contingency for tuitions on the Circuit Breaker of $100,000, and still leave ourselves with an expected carry-forward or balance of $1.6 million in Circuit Breaker. So we're projecting about a $1 million operating budget surplus, and we're also projecting about a $1.6 million surplus in Circuit Breaker that will be available to us.
Yeah, thank you, Sean. If I could just, I know I asked you this in Budget Subcommittee, but it might be important for everybody to hear, might answer some of the questions that Joan was wondering. So although this is really great news on the slide, and we're carrying over, you know, hopefully that 1.68, that would not be the case if we did not get the extraordinary relief and the reserve relief, correct?
It's correct. The extra, well...
So we have not, oh, I'm sorry.
I would say, the extraordinary relief was additional funds that we would not have gotten if we hadn't filed for it. The reserve relief is essentially a loan on the next year, so I think we would have received that in any case, which is kind of what's shown in the 4.3 versus the 4.796 figure, because that's based exactly on your costs. But I think it's true to say that the $611,000 is entirely due to that decision to go for the extraordinary relief.
Right, so as we are forward thinking, as Joan was asking us earlier, what can we protect, you know, in our ring B funds? Looks really great that we are saying there's that 1.6, but had we not gone for extraordinary relief, there would have only been $1 million, and had we not gotten the reserve relief in advance, then we would have been down to only a half million. So those numbers can change pretty quickly.
I think that's a good point.
I did have a question, so I know, I don't think I caught this one in Budget Sub, but so, am I just reading this wrong, that at the bottom of the previous column where it says final balance, carry-forward to the next year, isn't the same number that we're seeing on that top of the next column?
That was the change. If you look at the one that's being presented...
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Got it.
Yes, that's the change.
That's the change.
One of the changes, yes.
There it is. I was like, how are these numbers not the same? Yep, and they are now. Okay, great.
This slide is a look at out-of-district tuition, being the, one of the largest expense, non-payroll related areas. So if you look at the top, you can see what built up the budget that we see, and you can see there are some very large credits that are assumed in the operating budget. There's some funding sources that fund a lot of these costs for out-of-district tuition. When we look at the budgeted placements for this fiscal year, we were budgeting close to $12 million in tuition costs. And that's the, what I would say is the gross tuition payments that Norwood is actually paying to all of the out-of-district schools. And then after those payments, we have credits from Circuit Breaker of $5.4 million and the stabilization credits, which are still assumed and were part of the budget of $550,000. So when you come to the end of it, the budget that you see in the operating budget is really only just under $6 million for out-of-district tuitions, but the true spending on out-of-district tuitions is close to $12 million. When you go below that, you're looking at our projections, and these are early projections. We're projected to be at about $11.3 million in the placement. So we are saving close to $600,000 in placements. At this point in time, we're holding the Circuit Breaker credit assumption and the stabilization credit assumption at what it was in the budget, and arriving at a final projected spending of $5.3 million. So as we mentioned earlier, when we're looking by cost category, we're projecting a surplus in the, in the tuition lines of about $660,000. That's, and there's many ups and downs, but you could, you could say that that's a part of the $998,000 surplus. We are holding some Circuit Breaker funds for a contingency in case these placements continue to go up, so we'll have to watch these closely. As special education, it can tend to be a volatile area. Right now, we, we have 80 students outplaced versus a budget of 81, so very close to what we projected. And just to clear up this, this note, so the sped stabilization count has a balance of $700,000, and we're assuming an offset right now of $550,000. If we do take that offset, we'll still have a balance of $150,000 in the sped stabilization This is a look at all of the revolving funds that are, that are available and the balances there, as, as they are right now. You can see the carryover in each fund from the prior fiscal year, as these revolving funds carry over, that's, that they're used for a particular use, but the balance carries over every year. It's always available within that fund, as long as it's for that use, it doesn't go back to free cash. The current-year receipts are only through first quarter, and then you can see the funds, the projected spending, and the balance. So the first three of those are really all related to school building rental, custodial overtime related to school building rental, Savage Center rental, and other school building rental. All of those have fairly healthy balances right now. Then we have the transportation revolving, which, which includes all of the transportation fees. We carried over about a year's worth of the fees, about $224,000. We've collected close to $52,000. We, we have a balance of $194,000. We're currently assuming a credit of $150,000. So in order to get to the balance we're projecting in the operating budget, we're assuming we're going to charge some transportation costs to this revolving as we planned. We have the preschool tuition account, currently with the balance close to what they carried forward of $267,000. Athletic fees, which started, which we carried over at $78,000, we brought in $50,000, we're at a balance of $126,000. They will continue to use that account for costs related to athletics. The extended day, this will likely be the last time we report on the extended day. We've been watching this balance, and it's pretty, been pretty consistent. It was at $680,000, $681,000 at the end of the year. It's right now at $682,000, it's just hovering around that amount. I think that, at this point, is going over to the town, so we likely won't need to report on that again. And then we have the drama and the music, which are fees for those two programs, as well as donations. They're both used actively by those different areas for costs that they have. We're not assuming any sort of credit to the operating budget at this point, because we don't need to, and they both have consistent balances with what they typically, we typically see. And then there are two other revolving accounts, there's the sped stabilization, as we discussed, $700,000 available, we're assuming a credit to the operating budget right now, $550,000. And then there's also a non-resident tuition account, where we bring in funds for students who come not from other school districts to Norwood, and the other school districts pay us. We currently have $47,000 sitting in our account from last school year, and we will expect to probably pull, collect another close to $50,000 this school year. We didn't touch that at all last year, and it's all available if we need it, if we need a reserve, we can, we can tap that account. Lastly, there's just a note that about approximately 7.8 FTEs are paid out of the revolving funds. That includes preschool staff, that includes some business office staff, and I'm trying to think of what else. Those are probably the primary ones, the preschool and some business area, office. And that takes us to the end of the first quarter projection.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have questions for Mr. Mannion on the quarter update?
Can I perhaps add one other thing?
Yes.
On that last slide, when Mr. Mannion was just talking about the non-resident tuition for those in the community, just to be clear, we do not participate in school choice. This is just related to one student from another district that the school committee approved, I think, a few years ago. Their home district was unable to meet their needs, so that district pays toward for the tuition of that student. So that's what that line is, that's not something we would typically see, and it's not related to school choice, and it's not related to us taking students who didn't live in Norwood.
Thank you for that clarification. Any other questions or discussion?
I think I would just say thank you for that very detail, and I think, you know, when we, when Theresa and I started to dive into this as a Budget Sub, some of the things weren't kind of quite matching up with what we had seen last year, right? And I think, but I think to that, to Mr. Left's point, that, you know, there's two new people looking at the budget with fresh eyes, and just how we expend our mon, our, you know, our monies, even just something we've talked about, I think we've talked about in these meetings, you know, looking at where specific positions are being charged to grants, and where we could, we're actually, you know, getting hit twice with certain, you know, with MTRS and things like that, where we shouldn't be doing that, and just like looking at places where we can maximize and optimize what we, you know, the way we should be paying people and pulling people into the general fund and putting other things into those grants. I think we're going to start seeing more of this type of, you know, savings, and it is, you know, the way that we did look at the budget last year when we approved it, it was what we had at that time, and it's been, you know, it's kind of a fresh look at it, and that's, so things are going to be a little bit... at it, and that's, so things are going to be a little bit flux. Teresa?
Yeah, just looking back at my notes from our meeting on Friday, I know there's still staffing report and a grant report coming, so I'm not going to talk about those two things, but if we could just quickly go back to the second slide, Sean, the first quarter projections. So just for the committee to think about, and also I'm asking for direction for us as a subcommittee with Mr. Love and Mr. Mannion. So embedded in that bottom line, that final projected balance of $998, part of that is $40,000 from the CFE grant that moved to the town. So if you think back to our conversations with Dr. Mina's and Mr. Wells in March, April, and May, right, there were a couple of things that we said, we're going to make further decisions come fall. So we need some direction as a budget subcommittee and with Mr. Love, Mr. Mannion, about what the rest of you want us to look at or do or bring back to you. So there is $40,000 in the FY '25 budget for the operation of the CFE grant in addition to the grant money, but now that grant has been moved to the town, so there's $40,000 we could discuss. There's, I always mess up this amount, but somewhere between $57,000 and $65,000 that we had budgeted for compensated accesses that we can now move around in our budget. And then you may remember, we were going through a lot of discussions of do we add an integral interventionist? Do we add back a classroom teacher? I just wanted to make sure that we, you know, we as a committee had put those things on the table in the spring, and we said we would come back to them in the fall, and it's now the fall. So as Mr. Love continued to present on grants and staffing, I just wanted to remind everybody that we need some direction on those topics.
Kate?
Yeah, I'm curious to see, to hear about the grants, and obviously there's staffing numbers that just went out, but I guess I would say I would want recommendations from our administrative team, how things look right now, and given what you've said, Theresa, given, you know, the positions that we were looking at last year, but being proposed by (cough) in terms of what our needs are looking like now.
And I would say too, that, you know, you're going to balance this year's needs versus what may be the needs in any kind of improvement budget that you want next year as well. So, you know, just because it's there, right, does not mean you have to spend it. It could be shifted over to Circuit Breaker, for example, which we could then use to fund FY '26 positions, should you choose you want a different elementary study model or, you know, or more staff next year for the middle school, right? So there are different priorities that will, you know, that you should look at as you go forward, and hopefully those conversations come out during the budget development conversation too. But certainly I'm open to different conversations for this year as well as we learn what the district really needs to function in, you know, the best way for kids, and based on the conversations you had last year as well.
Yeah, I think that's one of the things that, especially with these, these conversations and discussions that we've been having, you know, and again, the whole fresh eyes type of mentality that, you know, some things that maybe we really, really, really thought we had to have at the end of last year, you know, now with a little bit of, you know, more deeper diving into it with a different team, well, you know, maybe we didn't need certain things quite as much, or maybe in the model and the way that we're kind of, the things are being molded now, it's not, those things aren't as important. You know, had, if we were going forward full steam, it had exactly as we did last spring, yes, they would, you know, I just feel like, and that's not to say I don't want anyone to sit there and think, well, you didn't need it. Like, no, that's not what I'm saying, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying that, you know, things shift and things change with a different perspective and a different, you know, path forward, so I just, you know, I hope that is clear and not a bunch of jumble, Kate.
Well, yeah, to your point, like, and just to sort of rephrase, I would love to hear how it's going, like an update based on those, you know, the decisions that were made, how it's looking, how people are faring, et cetera, and then what options might be, like, based on what Superintendent Love said, here are the options, you know, using the different ways that this could be used, and how it's sort of presented that way, explained that way, so that we can make an educated recommendation.
No, I think that's a great point, Kate, because there were, you know, obviously we knew that last year there was a lot of student needs and that we really didn't feel even like maybe we weren't meeting last year or that needed to be met this year, and I think, you know, as we come few more years removed from COVID and, you know, there's going to be lingering effects, obviously, but things seem to be writing themselves a little more, you know, water is finding level and the ship is being righted and all those cliches that you want to find. But, you know, it is coming back to a little bit of a normalcy, so I think that things hopefully will, will continue to move in that direction, and we will not need as intense supports as we were really like, we were, we were feeling it last year. We really, really were feeling it. But I think recommendations from, yeah, from the administrative team would definitely be helpful.
And we're, we're making the floor and move on to the grants.
Yep.
We've had a little bit in budget sub, and I think maybe this ties into what Kate is asking. Mr. Love, could we at our next meeting have from you the enrollment grid for the district? So I know school committee members, we have access, it's in our drive, but if we could officially have it on the agenda and take a look with you?
Yes, I can add that to the agenda.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on the quarter before we move on? Okay. So we'll move on to the next item, which is review of the grant funding.
Can we pull it up?
Sure.
And as Mr. Mannion pulls this up, obviously the school committee has the authority to look at grants, right, that we get each year. I know that hasn't come to you regularly, so our thought process here was to provide you with some detail around our entitlement grants, our major entitlement grants that include staffing. So we'll walk you through, or Mr. Mannion will walk you through some of these grants, and in kind of a general sense, and he'll discuss the major provisions of each of those grants, including staffing if they're included in there, and the FCE count for each type of staffing that's in there, with the idea that, you know, you'll, you'll take a look at this, you'll, you'll know what it is for this time, and are there any major changes, major shifts from, say, you know, staffing to professional development, for example? We'll share those with you as the year goes on, so you know if there are any major changes, but this is kind of a kickstart for where we are looking at either applying for our grants or just ready to apply at the moment, so.
This is, yep, as Mr. Love mentioned, this is a review of all the entitlement grants that we have for the Norwood schools. This is a review of the grants that will be awarded for the '24, '25 school year. The second paragraph just mentions that, please keep in mind that these federal grants are on almost a two-year, a little over a two-year period. So even as we go into '24, '25 fiscal year, we're still spending down small portions of the last year's entitlement grants. And as we work on this next one, most of it will be spent this school year, but it will continue to be spent over the next 27-month period. Typically, when you look at state grants, they're pretty cut and dry of a year with a 6:30 end date. However, there are some state funding sources, some of which we're going to mention, which do allow for carryovers, such as the emergency support for homeless families and the emergency school of origin transportation. At the top, we, we looked at the SRR3 grant. This one really is coming to a close. As we said, we would expect to be fully spent by the, by the end of September, which is the deadline for the grant to be fully spent. This is just some, a highlight of some of the expected uses.
Just a little bit.
Yeah, go on, the slide. In the slide itself? How do you do that in the slide? How do you do that in the slide, by the way?
No, you gotta go to, which you pull up.
There's a way, but I just go back to the actual two.
Like that?
Where's the screen you're showing? That's the screen you're showing.
Sorry.
Silly Google me.
Oh, here. Is that it?
Yes, the one.
Ah, sorry. Okay. So SRR3, this is a preview, this is a description of what was spent in these last few months, covering FY '25. It was spent professional development, supplies, tutoring services, translation services, summer school staffing, summer PD, interventionists, and teacher workshops. This really reflects the last $300,000, $305,000 on this grant, and the grant will be fully spent, as we said it would be, by 9:30. We have until December to officially report on this grant as it will be closed with the final report. Title I funding, we expect about $500,000. It's in process. This is a grant that you can only really carry over 15% into the next year. Six teachers are funded out of this, as well as summer school stipends, bookkeeping for the business office to work on the grants, benefits for the FTEs that are on the grants, retirement for the FTEs, tutoring, private school allocation, instructional materials and professional development. It supports the Title I program in the Norwood schools. Title II-A is a smaller entitlement grant. It's 80, we expect about $82,000 in the current year grant for new teacher mentoring, professional development, private school, and a bookkeeper. Title III is another smaller entitlement grant, $90,000, to be spent right now on teacher stipends for after-school programming, bookkeeper, para-professionals. There's about 1.3 FTEs planned on this grant, professional development, as well as family liaisons, which we're currently in the process of looking to hire.
And this grant's focused on ELL.
And ELL is the focus of the grant. Thank you. Title IV, a smaller grant of $35,000 for professional development, technology stipends, and family engagement support. Okay, then we come to the 240 grant, that's the sped IDEA grant, one of the larger grants that helps to offset special education. So for this grant, which we expect about $1.2 million, we, we do fund a lot of staffing. We, we expect to have three OTs on this grant, about one FTE of PT, 7.9 FTE of paras, as well as supplies, benefits, and a little bit of tuition. There is a note on this that we are looking at moving two OTPT off this grant, I think that's included in these figures already, to the operating budget, and also taking some paras from the operating budget and moving them to the grant. The reasoning is that if you have unit A staff on grants, you're required to reserve a part of that grant for MTRS payments. If you can move those unit A staff off the grant, you essentially save the town and the district those MTRS costs, which we wouldn't normally incur if we were just paying for that staff out of the operating budget. So it's a way to kind of optimize the grant funds, but we didn't want to make a huge, large change in the allocation of staff on this grant at the moment, so we, we thought we would, we'd met and discussed, and we're just move a few staff off at the moment.
And the reason that we're being careful with that is because we are cognizant that right now, if staff members are in the grant, benefits are being paid out of the grant. So we looked at staff members who did not take benefits at the time, so we shifted them to the operating side, so the town wouldn't get hit with additional benefit packages that weren't expected. So we'll have continued conversations with the town as a group for to try to save money, the 9% additional, the kind of hit that you get when you put a teacher in, in the grant on MTRS versus benefit packages that might come the other way. Also the benefit of being able to bill for mass health services, because you can't bill for mass health services and get that reimbursement if one of these, if a provider is in the, in the IDEA grant as well. So lots to go on that one.
Great point. And there's a small entitlement grant, 262, for, also for special education. I believe this is the early, is this the early childhood allocation? It funds about one para for, for the LMPA program, including benefits and the retirement costs. And then there are two state funding sources that we mentioned. One is the emergency assistance for homeless families. This is the shelter assistance. It's about $105 per day for these students, and it's, we collected these funds over the course of last school year and did not spend any of them, and these funds are allowed to be treated like a state grant and carried over, so we have about $328,000. We're working on this funding right now. We expect to use this funding perhaps to offset operating costs that are directly related to these students. For instance, if these students are in some classes where ELL teachers are teaching, we could use some of those salary costs and move it to the state funding. We haven't assumed that in the operating projection you saw, but this is sort of like another funding source that we can use during the school year. I don't know how long these funds are allowed to carry over, but we should be receiving more quarters of this as the current school year goes forward as well. And then there's some transportation, I don't know if that's showing on the screen or not. There's a small amount of transportation reimbursement for the homeless families that we also received. We're working with the town to see what we can do with those funds and whether we can use them as an offset as well for some of the transportation costs.
Kate? Go ahead, Kate. Oh, are you talking, I can't tell, maybe muted.
Already, in the last, I think the panel we need to go was, and so maybe this is covered in the last two categories, but on, in September, September 9th, there was a press release that the governor granted $1.7 million basically for students experiencing homelessness, and Norwood was awarded $40,000. Is that included, is that for '25, '20, is that for this year or is that for next year? And is that included in what you're showing us, Mr. Mannion?
I, I believe that is not included. It's not an entitlement grant, so there, it's a good, that's a good point, that brings up a good point. This is not a preview of all of the grants that we expect to receive, because there are other state grants, and there are other, maybe, federal grants that aren't considered the entitlement grants. This is just a preview of those large, what we call entitlement grants, but that $40,000 is not really part of this, but we do expect to receive it for this school year. I know, JJ, you, you helped work on that, and we did get, we did get approval.
We did, we, we just got approved. It took a while to go across the governor's office, and then obviously what you saw, Kate, was them finally approving it, even though we applied for it months ago. So, yeah, we have, Lisa Boudreaux with the grant, and she is obviously in charge of, like, we came into a program with, with her, so.
That's different than the 328, which, the 328 is treated like a straight state grant, but it's a funding source from the state that's a shelter reimbursement, specifically for the students in the shelter, and it's reimbursed at a certain dollar amount, it's like $104.89 per day per student that's in the school. So this is really that reimbursement over the course of a whole year that we collected it. It's a little different than the $40,000 grant that we actually wrote a grant for that the governor requested funded.
Yeah, that was, like, not every district wrote for that grant. We, we saw it, we wrote it, and we, or we asked for the max and got the max of what we were hoping for.
So, so this department must have intentions for those funds, and it's not restricted to transportation, is it?
No, no, like, for instance, we, that, she used it for some summer programming to, to give some kids some exposure on some field trips and stuff like that over the summer, so they were able to do things like that, extracurricular activities, and then throughout the year, more tutoring services for some of our high-needs students that we're able to give for them and help pay for that too. So it's, she does have a whole plan, budgeted out for them, but it's, it was not transportation.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, these press releases are sometimes exciting, but not always descriptive, so thank you.
Teresa?
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mannion, Mr. Love, for this. I'm wondering if you could just share the full committee, the condensed version of the conversation we had in budget sub around how this grant funding is following two of our policies. So one of our fiscal policies, DV, is funding full-blown applications, and that just reinforces and reminds us that all funding needs to be reviewed and accepted by the school committee before it is expended, including grants. And then the other policy, Mr. Love, I'm hoping you could just talk briefly about, is DEC, which says that federal funds can supplement, but not supplement. So if you could just explain to all of us how embedded in this approach, those two policies are being adhered to.
Sure. And the first policy that you're referring to, obviously, you know, this is, this is our way of doing that, right, of giving you an idea of what the grants are going to be spent for to get your approval for that, obviously with any major changes coming to you throughout the course of the school year, if there are any shifts to the grant funding status. The other part is supplanting versus supplementing. We are not allowed to use the grant monies to supplant current operational things that we already have. So these are additional staff, additional services that we are incorporating throughout the year. As we do look at service delivery for, so for example, for the emergency assistance and the, and the funds that we're going to use for some of our newcomer students, that we'll, we'll look at that as newer staff that came in due to the increase in those student numbers, but we'll be very careful not to supplant current operating funds to do that as we go forward. There are different ways to shift to ensure that we're not supplanting as well, so it could be some, I guess, some. So it could be some, I guess, some interesting and thoughtful processes to make sure that we're doing it right. So for example, these paraprofessionals in IDEA are not funded in the operating fund right now. You don't have them funded in the operating budget. They'll be funded in IDEA. Does that answer your question, Mr. Loth?
It does, yeah. I just wanted to add the point of reference for the committee, but also the community, because again, as we go into, you know, FY '26, I just think it's important people understand our policies and restrictions on some funding. And then in regards to us approving, I think you already said this, Mr. Loth, but this is information at our next meeting. You will come for a request for approval for some of these grants.
I will, I will. Well, preferably, since you reviewed them, if it's, you know, if it's suitable, you know, on a content agenda would be great, because you reviewed them today. But I'll leave that up to you and I'll work with Chair Mizoma to make sure we either have it on a content agenda or a separate budget agenda.
Okay. Any other discussion on the grant funding? Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Manion, for that update. So we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the authorization of transportation contracts. Invitation to bid, Mr. Manion again.
All right.
I can pull that up too.
There it is. I got it.
It's gonna be really good to go with me by then.
Does that look all right?
Yes.
Okay. So this memo outlines that Norwood Schools is currently in the third and final year with the contract for the regular bus transportation. This is the yellow bus transportation. Due to this fact, we're seeking authorization from the school committee to solicit bids for this service using an IFB, an invitation for bid process that follows Mass General Law, Chapter 30B. So an IFB is, when you solicit bids, you look for, you look for all vendors to be what they call responsive and responsible. Responsive means that they're following what you're requesting in the bid. They're dotting all their i's, crossing their t's. They're providing the insurance and the things that you require. And responsible means that this vendor is capable of giving the service, providing the service that you're looking to deliver. They have the years of experience. They have experience in other districts. If all of those conditions are met, then in an IFB process, you look at the price bids and you go with the lowest bidder. Typically, with these transportation bids, we see in most municipalities around here, one bidder. Under Chapter 30B, where your municipalities are restricted to a three-year contract, unless you go to the municipality to get approval to go out for a contract that is over three years in duration. And there's a couple of good reasons with the transportation bid that we, that the district would maybe want to look at a four- or five-year contract. Especially, these are critical services, and there's a lot of change coming for the district, which are some good reasons to secure a vendor, especially given the middle school and some potential elementary changes. And another reason is for cost. We know that, as we've seen earlier today, FY '26 is likely to be a challenging budget. Typically, with these transportation contracts, you look at a very large increase in the first year of the contract and then two slightly, and two more modest cost increases in the second and third year. With a five-year contract, a vendor could, you know, take their costs and sort of spread that cost out, because they know they'll be providing the service for more years. So it could mean potentially bids that come in with a lower increase in the first year and maybe more regular increases throughout the five years. The only sticking point with that in Norwood is that basically the next opportunity for us to go to the town to ask for this approval will be in the spring. And these are critical services. So we'll need to put out a bid much earlier than that and choose a vendor earlier than that. So we've been in discussions with the town procurement officer, Jason Adams, and we believe we can structure the bid such that we go out for a three-year bid with a request for optional pricing on a year four and five, and that those two years would be contingent upon town approval in the spring meeting. And then, once we choose a vendor, we wait until the spring meeting. If that's approved, we can look at five years, you know, possibly a three-year contract with two options to renew, getting us through five years. Or if it's not approved, we go with the three-year contract. That's, that's what we're asking, we're asking you to consider these options as we look for this current authorization.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Manion on the memo? So basically, we did discuss this in Budget Sub, and just to kind of paraphrase for, you know, what I think the administration is looking for is basically a vote from us that, you know, we will or not approve or give our blessing to go forward with looking at the five-year option. So structuring any motion in that way, if that is where we want to go with it, so that we can allow the administration to look at all options prior to getting a town meeting vote. Paraphrased. Any questions about that? Any discussion? Anybody want to make a motion?
Motion to approve.
We got a structure a little different than that.
Motion to approve the authorization of the transportation contract invitation to bid. Is that better?
We need to, we need to...
Can you scroll up?
We need to be more specific about the three and the five-year options.
And then go to solicit bids for a three-year contract.
Right.
Pricing for optional years.
Okay, so...
So we're, basically, we want to, are we authorizing the administration to look at the five-year option with the caveat that if town meeting does not approve it, it's a three-year option?
Yes. So, for Donna, I move to approve the authorization of the transportation contract invitation to bid for up to five years as an option. Yes?
That would work, right? I think that sounds fabulous.
That sounds...
Do I have a second?
Somebody online did.
Did I hear it?
Somebody on the TV did.
Did somebody, Teresa, did you second?
Second. I did.
Okay, Kate did. Kate, second.
Can I clarify with that?
Sure, yeah.
So, up to five years, don't we want a minimum of three? So shouldn't we specify a three-year contract with optional years four and five?
Yes.
If I may, the administration's recommending the motion to be solicit bids for a three-year contract with pricing for optional years four and five contingent upon approval by the town.
I love that you wrote it. Do you accept that?
I accept that from the amendment.
Okay. Thank you. And Kate, do you second that? Kate, I think you might have muted. Yes, thank you. Okay. Any other discussion before we vote? All right, go. Teresa?
Yeah.
Kate?
Yeah.
Joan?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And IMES as well, so that passes five to zero. Thank you for wordsmithing. Okay, all right, so that brings us to the next item, which is authorization for food service contract.
All right, so very similar, but slightly different. We are also in the third year of, our third and final year of our contract for a food service management company, SMC. Due to this fact, the administration seeks authorization from the school committee to solicit proposals for this critical service using a request for proposals, an RFP process, following Mass General Law, Chapter 30B. So in an RFP process, essentially, it's a little different than a bid in that price is not the only determining factor. When you come down and you have all of your, your vendors that are responsive and responsible, they'll be submitting two separate proposals, a non-price and a price proposal. There's a valuation team who evaluates first, usually first, the non-price proposals. There's a set of criteria, and you award various categories, highly advantageous, advantageous, not advantageous, or unacceptable. And after that, you go to opening the price proposal separately. It gives the municipality or the district the option to choose a vendor that may not be the lowest price if you deem that vendor to be the most advantageous. Now, should say that with a food service management company, the DESE is now requiring all districts to follow their process. They have an RFP template that we have to use. It's fairly new and it's still being flushed out. There are places in that RFP where a municipality can add some local criteria to the non-price proposals, but essentially, we have to follow their RFP process. I would say, again, this is a critical service. This may be, this is, we're, again, recommending that if we can go for longer than a three-year contract, it would be recommended. The food service contracts are structured in all options. So when we had a three-year contract, it's a one-year contract with two options to renew. If we had a five-year contract, it would be a one-year contract with four options to renew. In the food service management contract world, you're always given the chance to renew, you know, if things are going well or not. It's always options. That being said, again, we wouldn't really have opportunity to go for town approval for longer than three years until the spring. So we're recommending something similar to the transportation, where we ask that the school committee gives us approval to go out for a one-year contract or three-year contract with two options to renew, as well as pricing for the optional years four and five contingent upon approval by the town. And I can highlight that language.
Any questions or discussion?
I just have one question, Emery.
Mm-hmm.
Sean, thank you for including the DUSI template. All sixty-six pages of it. And, you know, most of it is not negotiable. We have to do what DUSI says. But the part that you just referenced, that could be edited to add additional things in the district.
Yeah.
If things are added in, would that be brought back to the school committee before we send out the RFP? Or what is that process like?
I don't see why not, yeah. And I should say with both, with both the transportation bid and with the schools, with the school nutrition, with the food service management, RFP, we're getting authorization from the school committee right now. If there are things we want to change in either of those contracts, I think that should be discussed before we actually put out this bid or put out this RFP. When you have, when you're looking to solicit bids or an RFP, this is the opportunity if there are things about those contracts that we look for difference. For instance, if you wanted electric buses, I don't think that's something we're looking into. But that would, this would be the time to look into whatever those changes are.
Okay, thank you. And does that fall under executive session discussion? Or is that an open business session discussion?
I think that would be an executive session, because you're, you're talking about a bid, a sealed bid, RFP process. I don't think you can have that conversation and talk about your desires for the... Let me get back to you on that one. Let me get back to you on that one.
Okay, yeah, I would just ask, Emery, as you're looking at agendas and planning with Mr. Loth, like, figure out when that should come back in the executive session. Because I do think that is an executive session discussion, but always should check that to be sure.
Yep. Okay. Any other questions or discussion? Would anyone like to make a motion to approve? Don't all jump at once.
I'll make a motion, Emery, to authorize the administration to solicit bids for a three-year contract for RFP services with pricing for optional years four and five contingent upon approval by the town.
Thank you. Does anyone want to second that?
Second.
Easy part this time. Any other discussion before we vote? All right. Teresa?
Yeah.
Kate? Muted or stepped away? I can't see Kate, so that's why.
Thank you, Emery, for stepping away.
Okay. So we will skip that for now. Joan?
Yeah.
Sorry?
Yes.
David and IMES as well, so that will pass four to zero. Okay. All right, great. So let us move on to our next agenda items under Old Business, where the first item is an elementary study update. Who wants to take?
I can take that. Thank you, Governor Chair. So as you know, we've had two parent forms now on the elementary study, as well as a staff form. There were raised multiple questions there from the community and staff, and I shared with you at the last meeting kind of a cost analysis based on the three models. I'm not going to go through that again. And in the memo, I remind you, you know, of the additional positions in alignment with Coakley opening of next year that would be required to be budgeted for each scenario. So what I want you to share, what I want to share with you tonight is that I am, I have updated numbers from Sandmore based on projections from the current enrollment as of October 1st. And I've projected those out through the 24, 25, and 25, 26 school years. I am putting two different models together. One is one based on the class sizes, similar to what I did at the last presentation, where we're looking at class sizes from anywhere around 22 and an average. But I'm also going to do one based on the staff form, just to share what it would look like if smaller schools like Callahan and Bolch had classrooms of around 20 students, and the larger schools had kindergarten, first grade classrooms around 20 and upper-level classes of around 22 to 23. You'll see, I think, as I go through this analysis that that would increase the staff exponentially. So I'm going to share with you not only those two models, but also the current class sizes that we have now. So I wanted to try to get those done for you in a memo on Friday. That's my goal, to have that to you on Friday. So you can have some more information just to see what those models will look like based on class sizes. And when we come for the vote on the 30th, you'll also have all of the information from the survey that closes on the 21st for the community. So I will have that information to you that week prior to the meeting as well. So you could really vet each model. Nobody's model roughly, as an estimate, would cost based on the staff required to fill those, those particular models and the programs. So you can make your decision on the study on October 30th. And again, as a reminder, once you make that decision on the educational model, I will then come to you the next meeting with, you know, the required, or the recommended timeline based on the requirements of, you know, the technology cost and the transition cost and all that. I don't know if you wanted to add anything, Mr. Loth?
Thanks. I just want to thank the staff that came out to the listening session, as well as the second community forum, the folks that came out to that. So see us in person or online in the second community forum. I hear you about what we're going to get before the vote on the 30th. I have a question that I'd like, that may not have an answer tonight. And it's kind of a big question. But I'm wondering if, we're being asked to vote off the model on the 30th. And I'm wondering, and scenarios one and three both involve a K through, sorry, K through four, adding a K through four school. What I would like to potentially take offline, but have addressed, is whether it is part of the later November decision? Does it, does it make sense to be part of the later administrative November decision as to whether it would be one or a three? Because those, the differences aren't logistical and operational to a large extent. And so this might be a premature discussion on the vote, what we're voting on, but I want to put it out there. And, Emery, you could, with Tim, decide how the best, like, procedurally, how, where this discussion belongs in terms of tonight or next time. Does it make sense?
Yeah, I mean, I could share my preliminary thoughts on that, Kate, right now. So knowing what model we're going to choose is going to help me really then focus on the, on the recommendation for process and time. I think, you know, when you're making a decision, if you decide that you think a K through four model is the way to go, I think at the same time, you should decide, is it the model that... that would have a broader spread of our higher-needs students across the district? Or is it the model that would require less shifts for students as we, as we kind of go through this? I mean, those are really the two options. And I think you'll have enough information for that. So I don't know that, like, my, my timing and my logistics. I mean, it really is looking at those guiding pillars, right? Those things you were looking at, which one meets those, which one meets those more? Because in one, obviously, in three, you're going to, you're going to interrupt more, fewer students. In scenario one, you're going to interrupt more students, but you're going to get that spread to balance out the higher-needs students across the district. That would be my hope. That way, we can really focus on timing after, after the model's chosen.
I guess, Kate, if I'm trying to understand your thought process, you're wondering if, you know, we should exclusively be looking at the K through four or leaving it as it is, models at the next meeting? And then because there's so many logistics around and timing around the option one or option three, if we go with a K through four, like, obviously, I'm not, you know, preemptively assuming that that be a second decision based on the, the timing, the logistical conversation and pieces that Mr. Leff would bring to us? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, I mean, I could anticipate questions, detailed questions about maybe one and three that would be part of that procedural examination. Maybe not. I mean, maybe I, I understand, Tim, like, what you're saying, that what the major differences are. And what I'm just trying to avoid is hemming ourselves, like, say we favor a change in the model, but then hemming ourselves into an option that something surfaces that would be prohibitive down the line. And that, I mean, I guess we could reexamine. But if you don't feel like that's going to be an issue, I mean, I'm open to those.
I do. Yeah, I mean, you're going to consider costs too, obviously, based on the monocuts. What I'm, what I'm fearful of, you know, and you've given this a lot of thought, and you've gotten a lot of feedback from the community.
Right.
Already. And I'm fearful that when, if it's time to look at a recommendation for timing and you're still having conversations about scenario one or scenario three, that's going to delay it and probably move my recommendation even further down the road just because, you know, I need to have a decision to be able to say, okay, here's the timing. And I want the time to be spent on that and deliberation, I guess, at that next meeting rather than a decision that could be made prior. I just feel like it would, it would possibly cause an additional delay in what our recommendation should make for timing down the road.
Okay, well, I always expect the conversation to be robust. Thank you.
Teresa?
I have two questions. One that's probably easier to answer than the other, so I'm sorry. But I think it was the easier one. The staff forum last week, I know Kate was there and I was there. Did any, Mr. Leff, did you have anybody take official minutes?
That's a great question. Donna, you were there, you didn't take minutes, did you?
I'm sorry, I was not at that one.
You were not.
I kiddos are here till four, so I'm sorry. Didn't even think to ask Lisa to go.
I don't know that we, I don't know that we did.
Is it helpful? I took notes. If I type up my notes and just send it so the rest of my colleagues know, it's basically just who spoke and the areas of concern they raised. Is that something people would like me to send out?
I would appreciate it personally.
Yeah, I think it'd be useful.
Okay. Okay, I'll work on that next week. And then my second question, and it's probably in tandem to, from Kate's pondering. Obviously, I've been having questions and I'm going to have more. So as we're looking at the information you're going to give us, Mr. Leff, I really appreciate you breaking it down further now in different class size configurations. Is it appropriate to have another budget subcommittee meeting and dive into the budget more? Or is that a conversation everybody is planning on having a full committee on that topic already?
Well, I will say again that the numbers that you're going to get are the baseline numbers, right? The minimum amount you'll need, I think. Knowing that, as you look at an improvement budget over the course of next year, we actually get into budget season, you're going to have conversations of, do we need more for X, Y, and Z? And do we want more for whatever scenario we chose? I would rather not get into the weeds of, you know, the, what, if it's going to be less than what I shared, because you're going to have to have conversations of, it could be more than, but, you know, it won't be, it won't be less than. So it's, it's happy to have those conversations and really break that down. But again, these numbers are all going to be very preliminary still, you know, and really come to light and more clarity as we go through budget season. And have multiple budget committees, you know, to talk about the budget stuff.
Yeah, I think, I don't know how much there's, you know, how much detail we can really get into. We have, you know, before we can, we kind of have to make that decision before we can start diving into. I mean, we have, like Tim said, like, the overall, we know one may cost a little more than another. We know there, you know, certain costs associated with, you know, making this decision over that decision. But the granularity isn't going to start to happen until we actually make that decision and start to really dive into it and get the, get down to the fine details.
And I think we would also want to know, when we have that discussion, I hear the budget piece, but if we do this and the timeline is two years out, that gives us two years to talk about budget stuff.
That's right. I mean, yeah, and I don't know the recommendation that I'm going to have for you in timing yet, but if it's next year, certainly, you're going to have to have a conversation about budget.
Yeah.
Right? If it's scenario zero, which is obviously remaining kindergarten at one school and the other school has one through fours, there are some budget implications in there, but that's mostly based on the Coakley additions, which is a whole separate conversation that we're going to, that we're going to be talking about as we move forward.
Yeah.
Whereas if you, you know, wait a year, and I don't know if that's going to be it or not, you'll have another year to develop the budget for, for that.
All right. Any other questions, discussion on this memo before we move on? Okay. All right, so we'll move on to the next item, which is a discussion, a quick update on the student services RFP. And that would be Mr. Mannion, no, Mr. Leff?
And this is just a really quick update, and Sean touched on it earlier. We did, we sent out the student program review RFP. It's attached here if you want to take a look at it. It closes October 22nd at 11:00 a.m. I had rewritten this memo, that isn't a change to this memo from Friday because of the Columbus Day holiday, so we had to actually change it up. So I'll update you on the proposal shortly after it closes, which is going to be Tuesday, the 22nd, I think, is that Tuesday? October 22nd at 11:00 a.m. So we'll update you shortly and hopeful, hopeful.
Any questions, discussion on that?
No, just the only question, Emery. Just because I know people schedule so quickly and I'm part of a group who's supposed to review the RFP. Mr. Leff, when do you think you'll work to get us all scheduled to review them?
Well, there's a timeframe attached, is there a timeframe attached to that?
To review it?
Yeah.
I need to check on that.
All right. Within the timeframe that's required to review it, but it'll be... Well, I mean, we want to get this thing moving pretty quick, Ms. Stewart. So once we get it back, we'll, we'll collect the team and we'll find some dates that work for everybody. I don't want to wait on...
So you'll wait till you see what you get back on the 22nd and then reach out and scheduling?
Yep, hopefully, we get something back, right? If we, so that's the goal, get something back, and then we'll schedule something with the members that were part of that team. Yep.
Thank you.
Anything else? Wonderful. All right, so then we will dive right on to our next agenda item, which is our policy subcommittee update.
We met on October 7th, and we're meeting again this Friday in the morning to check on, we had some questions about our initial review on six policies that superintendent brought forward. And so we should, we should have something for you guys to look at. We just need to do some clarifying on a few questions that we had. Short and sweet. Joan or Tim, anything to add?
Just so you know, we're looking at things like student discipline, student submission to educational surveys and research, possibly public comment at school committee meetings, curriculum development slash curriculum adoption, which are two policies that are recommended to go into one, and procurement requirements, just minor changes to all of these policies, really. We're just making sure that they haven't been done prior.
Any questions? Oh, yep, sorry. Any questions or discussion for the policy sub? I love it, the last two agenda items definitely fly, given us back some time. All right, so that brings us to the next item, which is the quarterly staffing update.
So, Madam Chair, I might ask that we shift this to the next agenda only because we're doing a lot of work still on this, and there's going to be updates that we're going to want to share with you at our next meeting anyway. So rather than go through it now and go through it then, if that's okay with you, Mr. Mannion, I think it would be more thorough if we go through it next time, because there are some changes, very preliminary analysis, and I'll leave it up to you if you want to take a look at this and ask questions, but I would recommend next, next meeting for this one.
Sure. Anybody object to that? Fabulous. I think that sounds like a fabulous idea. So we will, we will revisit that at the next meeting. So that would bring us to Dr. Munoz and your update on the MCAS and academic accountability.
All right.
Finally, away from some budget and operational stuff.
I'll try to be pithy so we can move on to the next stuff. Let me go ahead and share my screen. I'm going to share my screen, Tim.
JD is going to share.
I got it.
Oh, did it work? I know when you have, like, Zoom, you can't bust in on somebody, so.
Okay, so we're going to, I know that you guys had a chance to, if you haven't had a chance to look at the report, obviously, I'm going to go through it now. Let me know if you have any questions at the end or if you have a question mid-slide. Just shoot it this way and I'll go ahead and try my best to answer it. So this is the data overview. We're going to take a look at, obviously, MCAS, the accountability report, our Renaissance data, which is our interim data, some staff survey data, not all of it, just a brief synopsis of it, and our access scores, which is our multilingual learners, as well as our DIBELS testing, which happens in our, with our, with our little ones. So just a quick overview, we have just MCAS for meets and exceeds. So these are all the students that either met the MCAS score or exceeded, and ELA map in science. And then you can see that the blue is the high school and the red, well, not the high school, it's 10th grade. And the red is the grades three through eight combined across the district. The next slide we're going to pull up is just a proficiency chart. So it goes across from 2018 all the way to 2024. I really wanted to pull numbers from pre-COVID to see where we were at pre-COVID. It's something the state started looking at this year when they were on the superintendent call. They wanted to see how close we were getting back to our pre-COVID numbers, if the state was doing that, districts were doing that. And so we have a trajectory here of where we were at 2018 all the way till 2024, which is this past year. The next slide, we dis segregated it by grade level. So we went by grade level, wanted to see, and this is where I really wanted to pull by grade level to see which grade levels are actually at the pre-COVID numbers. You can see that our grade eight made some huge gains last year, as well as the whole middle school did, right? So we actually have a middle school teacher here, so shout out. You know, they, they increased at every level for ELA, but they are at pre-COVID numbers. So 2019, they were at this percentage in 2019, so now they're at 2024. So it's a celebration that we need to have. But we can clearly see that we still have some work to do post-pandemic. And you can see where the state is with the red highlighted. That is what the state has done, so we can see where we compare to the state as an average. The next slide, we went by student group this time, so we went by subgroup. So you can see the different subgroups right here for students that met and exceeded from this past year to the year before, from 24 to 23. And then also, we pulled the pre-COVID numbers in from 2019. And you can see what numbers are, our difference between the 24 and 23, and then our difference between last year's numbers and the pre-COVID numbers as well. There are some celebrations to be had here, but some of our student groups are really small, so one or two students can really affect the data. And if you can see on the left side with our student groups, the number of actual students that were assessed last year, we'll give you a little bit of a preview where we had all students, over 1,500 students took the assessment versus, like, we had one Native American student out of all those 1,500 students, which is why they don't have a data display here. The next group is by grade 10, so the first slide was by grades three through eight. The next slide is grade 10, same thing by subgroup, 24 to 23, and then 2018 and 24 as well. And then we do the same thing with math. So we did ELA, then we go to math. And as you can see, grade eight is just killing it, ELA and math. Doesn't matter which one it is, they're actually above the numbers that they were at 2019. So shout out to the middle school for doing some really good work there. And yet, we still have work to do. We want to celebrate what we want to celebrate, and then we acknowledge that there's still some ways to go that we need, want to actually move towards. But you can see, if we look at the state levels for math, we are right there at the state on grades three through eight. We scored exactly where the state's going. And then we actually fared better in 10th grade compared to the state average for meeting and exceeding. Then we went ahead and moved into subgroups, so divided by subgroups again from 23 to 24, and then from 2019 to 24. And you can see the differences there. Green obviously meaning increase, red meaning we're not there yet. And then our students with disabilities, although it's a low percentage number, we are, we didn't decline from 2023 to 2024. Same thing with 10th grade for the next slide. We have 10th grade doing the same thing. So you can see, it's a world of difference when you have over 1,500 students test in grades three through eight, and you only have 200 kids in 10th grade actually test. So the numbers actually are a lot more amplified in 10th grade with a couple of students, especially with a small subgroup like, you know, our Hispanic kids. There's only 43 of them. So every student counts at all grade levels, but they're really magnified here at the 10th grade level. Then we have science, and science had a whole bunch, they had a different assessment at one point, so DESI wasn't reporting on that, so I don't want to report on those different science assessments. But they did report on the 2019 science assessments for fifth and eighth grade, so I wanted to do that same type of reporting. Our fifth grade is doing a really stellar job. They increased eight points from 2023 to 2024. So the work that our, our teachers that are teaching science in fifth grade are doing should be celebrated because it's definitely paying off all their hard work. We're not at pre-pandemic numbers. We are in the eighth grade, even though we did decrease. But in fifth grade, we are, we are closing the gap. So that's something that we want to think about and celebrate. And then we take by grade level, by subgroup, and put them all on one graph. So first, we did it by grade level, then we did it by subgroup, and now we said, now let's put them all together, by subgroup and by grade level. So you can see the columns are by grade levels, three through 10, and then the rows are by subgroup. And you can see there, and that is just last year's, it's not 2019, it's not 2023, it's just last year's students that met or exceeded the MCAS. So we have ELA on one slide, we have math on another. And it's still, I think we talked about this last year. I remember having this conversation with you guys, how our former Ls, ELLs, our former multilingual learners seem to do really well after they exit the program. And it's not a whole bunch of students, but I believe that there's over almost 200 students that are on our monitoring status plan right now. So it's not a whole bunch, but it is, and it's interesting that we keep on talking about this. Then the last one is science, and you can see science, same trends by grades, by subgroup. So you can see where we're sparing out. And obviously, you read the memo, we do have some achievement gaps that we're still trying to close. We want to get to those as well. And then we wanted to see what our interim assessment status is. We have the Renaissance assessment, we took it three times last year, once in the, in the fall, once in the winter, and then once in the spring. And we want to still ensure, because last year was the first time we actually took those numbers and said, do they really predict our MCAS assessment scores? They were a lot more closer a year ago. There were some disparities this year, but the disparities weren't with the meets and exceeds. It was the partially and the not meeting. So it could be one of two things. It could be like, we had a lot of students that read and we moved them over to yellow, or vice versa. And so... And so, but it was a good data point for our schools to look at. And so we had it by district, and then we did it by school, and then we did it by grade level, so they were able to see all those different things. If you go to the, well, I'm on the next slide now with the Renaissance by school, so you can see schools fairly, you know, if they scored on the Renaissance, some schools declined on MCAS, but not every school was, it was almost close. And so one of the things we want to do this year is we're going to really mirror the star assessment and say, look at our students a little closer, what are we doing to support our tier two and tier three services? And how are we going to continue to support those students early on? If this is going to be a predictor for the majority of our students, how are we supporting those students to make sure that they are catching up to grade level or closing gaps? So math, ELA, those are both the percentages there. And then by grade level, so we wanted to see if there's any outliers in the grade levels, or if they were similar. So third grade's first, ELA is your blue, math is, I'm sorry, ELA is your star assessment, red is your, red is your MCAS assessment, sorry about that. Math is the next slide, blue is your star, red is your math, or your MCAS. You have grade four. So we really wanted to get into the nitty-gritty and make sure that we were looking at it at every angle, and how we're supporting our schools and our teachers to give them the most data they need to make informed decisions. And so we have fifth grade next, and then it goes all the way to sixth grade, all the way through eighth grade. Our 10th grade has a subset of students that takes the Renaissance star, but it's not enough to really factor in. They just use it with some other subset of students that they really want to continue to monitor on a close status for reading and math. So the accountability system, we talked about this last school committee meeting, so I won't break it down too much, but obviously they have a accountability percentile of how they rate tests amongst schools across the state, or amongst districts across the state. And then we have, are we meeting our own targets? And so this was sparsed out here a little bit of where schools landed. We landed in the substantial progress for one year, but I believe our average made us go back into the moderate progress. So if you look at our district scores, we were at 57% last year, which is a huge jump from the 33% that we made the year before. So we met 57% of our targets. We could see that for all students that are non-high school students, our chronic absenteeism numbers, we are actually decreasing our chronic absenteeism, so we got three points, which means we met the goal that DESI set for us, to say, are we decreasing? And that's, those are the numbers that we want to look at, because that's not affected by testing scores and test takers, that's just like our kids showing up to school. And so we, those are the numbers that we really are looking at closely this year. We talked about this over the summer as well. And then we can look at the access scores as well, and our kids making progress with language. And then the heavily weighted stuff is still the MCAS with achievement and growth. I also pulled it out by special education and multilingual learners to see how they're meeting the accountability chart. This gives us a more comprehensive look at how our students are doing, because it's not just about MCAS anymore, it's about, you know, the extended rate, extended engagement rate, the dropout rate, our English proficiencies, if we have enough students that are in access like in high school, we won't. And then our chronic absenteeism, right? So our special education students in grades three through eight are showing up to school, we're meeting our goals, and high school, we still got some work to do. But if you go to our multilingual learners, then we're inching closer to our goals for both chronic absenteeism as an example. But then we're not achieving nearly as high as a mark as we want to in the elementary school, the middle schools versus the high schools for our multilingual learners. So this is just a snapshot of our accountability report from 2018 till now. If you can see each school, what percentage were they meeting targets that were set by DESI? Whether it was chronic absenteeism, whether it was student growth, whether it was achievement. For instance, as a district, we were at 37% in 2018. We jumped to 59% of our goals, our targets met right before COVID. And then they brought out one more last year, was it 33% meeting targets? And then last, that was two years ago, before I got on, and then now we met 57% of our targets set by DESI. And this is just letting you know by grade level, meeting expectations, exceeding expectations, partially meeting, not meeting, the trajectory throughout since 2021 till now. We know 2021 and 2022 is not going to be heavily thought of and weighted as much because of the pandemic, but they still have numbers there, so we still want to show them what they are. You can see the numbers really haven't changed. Grade 10 is the next slide, same thing. And then our access results, so access results, our kids take our access assessment every January, and they have four domains, listening, speaking, reading, and writing. 41% of our kids made one year's progress. It's a complicated formula set by DESI saying, if you scored this in access this year, here's your goal next year. And so that's something that we've been trying to study to figure out how to make that formula, but we don't, we don't know. If kids have not made progress for two years in a row, we got to put them on a student success plan. And so we do have a handful of students that went on a student success plan for not making one year's progress two years in a row. And then if they continue to make progress, then this is where they're at. If they're coming into the country new, they don't have a score from the previous year, so these aren't our newcomers, because you have to have two sets of scores to find out if you're making progress or not. And then our DIBELS, this is kind of a funky graph to look at, but if you can see the BOIs, beginning of the year for the district, and EOI is the end of the year, you can see that the blue and the green has expanded, and that's basically our phonics instruction, our phonemic awareness. So, you know, where we had, you know, just over 38% of our kids, beginning of the year, were on grade level or exceeding grade level with our phonemic awareness, phonics skills, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. End of the year, we've basically doubled that number to 68%. And then you can see the grades, how it was broken down by grade, how the grades have expanded to. And that was kindergarten I was referring to, with those numbers. Because kindergarten is obviously heavily focused on reading skills. But every grade level improved. But as you got older, it's harder to make that jump, because kids are already, you know, and the phonics works in third grade, so that's why you don't see a big jump in third grade as you do in kindergarten. One of the things that we did do last year is we surveyed teachers and staff, we wanted to know climate and culture stuff, leadership stuff, school leadership, all that other stuff. One of the things that we were probably looking at the closest was our feedback and coaching. How often are we giving feedback to teachers, is it relevant, is it something they want to see? And so we gave, the BOI is not listed at the beginning of the year, we give it in a mid-year assessment. So mid-year, we gave them an assessment in January, then we gave them the assessment again at the end of the year. And this is what it told us, it told us that, you know, sometimes feedback, sometimes teachers get feedback and sometimes they don't, that was, that's the bulk, that's what the yellow is. Sometimes we get it and sometimes we don't. But very little teachers said that we get tremendous amount of feedback in our teaching. That's what the first graph is. The second graph is, is, well, if you get the feedback, is it useful? Can you use it? Like, is it something that you're using? And so some teachers start saying, you know, in the winter, they said, yeah, if I get feedback, I can use it. Not so much at the end of the year, although we had a lower sample size at the end of the year. But you can still see that middle of the somewhat useful is still pretty heavy, as people find it useful. But it did go quite useful there. And the last is how often, so this is one of our focuses this year, is what Mr. Love and I have been talking about. Is how often are people receiving feedback on their teaching? We can't expect things to change if we're not going to give teachers the support to change them. So if we want teachers to do things differently, or do things at a different rate, or they want to, if they want to do something, we got to help give them that support, and sometimes that requires some feedback, so. And that's what I got.
Thank you for that.
Dr. Munoz, you have a memo in there too, that summarizes the growth data pretty specifically too, right? You don't have to share, I'm just wondering.
Yep, I got the memo, yeah. Basically, you know, we do want to give some schools some shout-outs, like the Cleveland and Oldham as an example, they met or exceeded their chronic absenteeism targets, which is something to celebrate, right? The Baltch exceeded all their targets for their lowest performing, like they really knocked it out the park with chronic absenteeism. You know, and that's some of our population that we always worry about and talk about a lot. You know, we, the middle school did really well with achievement this year. And then you can see there's steady progress in ELA that's happening right now. We had improved performance in math, where we're, you know, exceeding pre-COVID numbers in grade eight, which is what we talked about. But we still have a performance gap, like we still have an achievement gap. Some of our subgroups, our students are still not closing the gap, and we want to really continue to look at that. ELA did go down in some areas that we want to look at for subgroups. Multilingual learners didn't do as well, even if they did well on access, they didn't do well there, so we're talking about that. And even though our middle school math is doing better, it's still far below where we want it to be. So we looked at things like that, and so we know our strategic planner, we had talked about these things before when we made them, we anticipated this was going to happen, and so we're continually working, and our teachers are doing a fantastic job of implementing all the strategies they can to help our kids. And I feel like, me walking through schools this year, I, it just feels like a much more lighter, lighter air. I'm not sure if Mr. Love feels the same way, obviously you can't compare to last year or this year, but, but you know, I've been through every school so far, and I can tell that the work the teachers are doing and students are really responding to it.
Any questions or discussion for Dr. Munoz? Joan? It's Teresa, you want to go first? I just, Teresa.
So what's being done? Because there are some significant drastic differences between subgroups. I'm looking specifically at ELA by grade, math by grade, and science by grade, which is really where those differences come out. We've got some populations that are trending down by grade. And if I'm reading this correctly, we have some sub-populations that are in the single digits for meeting expectations, that are starting off at a quarter meeting or exceeding expectations, and then dropping into the single digits as they continue their time here. Theories, thoughts, what the heck?
So we have taken a more streamlined approach in our administration meetings with our school leaders, and so I can tell you, like, we already have taken the first benchmark star assessment for the fall. We've got the results in. I already, with my team, have broken down the results to, for schools to receive them, so principals are, I got them actually yesterday, where they can see by student and by, and how well they're predicted to do as the year goes on. And so we're, my next step is to continue to work with our tier two and tier three services, and school leaders will help analyze the data in our admin meeting next week to look at our star data, look at our students, see who our tier two and tier three services are, see who we are using, or who is benefiting from those services. Does it match the current data that we have? Because we've been doing tier two and tier three services since September, before the assessment was given. Now, if the assessment's been given, are we seeing the right students? Are we teaching the right skills to these students? We're going to divide it by subgroup, we're going to divide it by all these other things. And so we're being much more strategic in looking at the data to inform our tier two and tier three services, which I think we always have done, tier two and tier three services, but from a district level to a school level, to like a school leader level, to an intervention level, I don't think it's been very consistently talked about throughout the year. It was more like, here's, we're going to see these students, we'll talk about it in three months, but now we're going to do this on a monthly basis, where we're actually looking at the data more closely and subgroups and seeing what we can provide then. That's the plan right now, Joan. Come January, when we give our, after we give our next assessment, I'm hoping to see some increases if we divide it by subgroup, but it's a wait and see right now.
For those of us who don't speak DESI jargon, tier two and tier three is...
Yes, so tier one is your on-grade level students, right? Tier one is your classroom instruction that happens. So a classroom teacher teaches a regular lesson, that is tier one, everyone has access to tier one instruction.
Okay.
Students that are, what we like to call your bubble students, students that are on the cusp, that are almost on grade level, but they have one or two skills that they may need more support in, those are your tier two students. So those students are seen by reading interventionists, reading specialists, or Title I teachers. Also, they are seen in small group by their classroom teacher, when it has literacy center time or math center time, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Mustang block will be another example of that that happens at the Coakley. Our tier three students are what DESI considers like your lowest performing students. And they actually, DESI will tell you what students those are by looking at the MCAS scores, but we also know because of our DIBELS assessments, we also know because of Renaissance star assessments, those students could be students that have IEPs. Sometimes we confuse ourselves in saying they are our Level One newcomer students, which they shouldn't be, because they're mastering language, but we are strategically placing tutoring services around them. We're trying to double dose them, so they get tutoring services and they see the interventions, and they see the reading specialists. And they're going to, and if we can triple dose them with the schedule, the classroom teacher will see them as well. And so in a small group setting. So tier three is like your, what we consider your highest needs student, and tier two is like, they're teetering between going to grade level, and if you don't pay attention to them, they can fall through the cracks and go to tier three.
Okay, so then looking at this chart, high needs is the high needs that we currently understand it, which is they could be an English language learner, they could be low income, they could be in students with disabilities.
Yes, they have to be two of the three.
They have to be two of the three to be high needs.
Yes.
Those people are also counted in the low income, the DLL.
They count twice, or three times.
Okay, okay. So if I'm reading these charts correctly, we are spending the vast majority of our budget on students with disabilities, which would be under our student services. And those are abysmal numbers that trend downwards. The question there is...
What are we doing?
What's, what's, I'm framing this from a warm and fuzzy perspective. What is the plan for moving forward to raise those scores? Because that's, that's concerning from every level, but if we're pouring so much of our budget into students with disabilities, why are we not getting a better return on our investment here?
So the first question that I will, I will...
I don't control the numbers, they're in the single digits.
So Dr. Munoz, first of all, are the out-of-district students part of our MCAS numbers here, or are they separate?
They'll be separate from here.
Right, so these are, I mean, when you're looking at the operational part of our budget, and the 6 million that's going to out-of-district students, that's a huge part of that. Those are not these students, right? So those are students from out of district. So it's, we're just looking at actually the students that are within the district that actually cost significantly less than that, right, if that makes sense? I would also say that, you know, when you do the RFP, and we have the program, if you come in, we're going to evaluate not only the programs themselves, but the instructional materials, methodology, those things that we're using in those classrooms as well. I think we're also looking at structures within the district to make sure that we're not pulling kids that have disabilities out of the general ed curriculum when they're getting that core content that they really need. The schedule is the way they're set now, we're pulling kids from all over the place, and they're missing out. So they're not getting supplementary services, they're getting services that are instead of that general education core tier one curriculum that Dr. Munoz was talking about. So there's a lot that we need to do to ensure we're not just replacing a curriculum and an instruction, but we're supplementing, and I think that's probably a lot of the reason you see some of these lower numbers. And I think, you know, just in terms of special ed versus general ed, I just want to be wary of that kind of conversation, and I understand the costs of students, of educating students with disabilities. But I also think if we really support, you know, the entire tier one piece that Dr. Munoz was talking about, with, you know, that's the general ed core curriculum, making sure to implement it with fidelity, and we're, we have the right thing, we'll see all of those numbers kind of get better over time. But whenever you have an impact on general ed students, you'll probably see a greater impact too on special ed students, just because they will perform at a lower rate likely, if that makes sense.
Our English language learners are performing at higher rates than our students with disabilities.
So English language learners don't have disabilities, right?
Correct.
So I just want to make that just out there for the public.
Correct.
It's a language barrier that are, and they're very specific.
And our Level Ones don't count on the MCAS scores.
Services that can be delivered to those kids, and there's an expected level of growth, right? Based on the language services we're providing. Students with disabilities, obviously, we're going to have varied services. Every student's going to respond differently to those services. And it's not going to be that kind of ease of trajectory that you would see in any yellow student when they get those services.
So Joan, scheduling is, as Mr. Love said, it has been complicated here for years, because we share specialists, and so all these things, having us pull kids is, can be difficult. And we actually are making an effort this year, whether it's Mr. Love or myself, sitting with the directors, sitting with school leaders, sitting with even teachers, just look at the schedules and say, we don't want to do in lieu of, we want to do double dosing. And sometimes schedule doesn't allow double dosing, only makes it in lieu of, so like, I'm going to... And sometimes schedules doesn't allow double dosing, only makes it in lieu of. So like, I'm going to miss my reading lesson in tier one to do a small group rest and then reading, which is more focused on a skill versus a comprehensive reading lesson. So we're trying to make that pivot too at the same time.
And we're analyzing it too, Joan, right? Like we're trying to figure out the whys. And those are just some reasons that we, that we see. Obviously, we're going to work to increase all student numbers that would include kids with disabilities.
Teresa, well, sorry, Kate Teresa was waiting first, so.
Yeah, thank you. First, I do echo a lot of the questions and concerns that Joan expressed. She's, she's beaten me to the rabbit hole.
I heard.
So obviously data brings a lot of questions and JJ, maybe I can hand you some of my questions later that are more just like curiosities. But I did want to ask a couple that are related to decisions the school committee has made or votes that we have to get in the past around school improvement plans or the equity audit or budgetary decisions. So around math, you said something a couple minutes ago that we've been hearing, I have been hearing since 2017. We need to figure out what is going on at the Copley at the middle school level around math. And over the last seven and a half years, we've tried different things. We've tried leveling, we've tried not leveling, we're back for leveling. And I would be really interested at some point, I don't expect the answer tonight, to know a little bit more, how is it fleshing out in the data for our seventh and eighth graders who are in accelerated math versus not? And then how is that also carrying over into the high schools? Well, at the high school level, something I've always wondered about, the way we do our sequence is if you're in accelerated math, you take geometry in ninth grade and then you take your algebra two in 10th. But the state has everybody take your, your math and math geometry in 10th grade. And I've always wondered, you know, what does that look like? For our competitors who are in geometry when they take it versus those who took geometry a year prior. So those are some of my, my wonderings around that. And then around science, I'm wondering, is there a difference? So depending where you are in your level of science, you even take biology in the 3rd or 10th grade. But you do take the MCAS the year you take biology, which is different than the math. So how, what are we seeing freshman students fire versus our sophomores who take bio?
Yeah, those are all great questions, Teresa, that, that obviously I'm sitting with school leaders and we're starting to look at in a more close, close, you know, under a microscope, I guess you can say. What I can say about middle school math, they, you know, they had this grant, Project Lead the Way. They've been doing this new program that they started last year, piloting this new project-based learning format. And their numbers did increase. It just, it's just lower than everyone else from a total achievement level. But last year, they did go up, you know, in math. And, and so that's, that's something that I want, obviously the public to know is that what they're, what they're pivoting to and what they're doing with the curriculum is working in the sense of a one year, but it still is far lower than like, you know, seventh grade, obviously 29%. And they went down, but like sixth grade is only 38%. There's still, everyone else in the 40s, but they still increased two points. So we want to, we still want to, we know that change takes time, three to five years when you do something new. And I, to your point Teresa, I wasn't here and I know you can give me all the context. And so I'd be more than happy to sit and talk with you of what they've been trying to do. But I do know that the Project Lead the Way and the work that they've been doing between Dr. Frazek and, and, and Mr. Harris, the, the team chair, working with the teachers, there has been some positive outcomes out of that, but it's going to take some time.
Okay. And then just another area of questioning, JJ, when you have time. I believe last year, the first year, there was the civics on cast, right? For eighth grade? Is that something that's continuing or is that just a pilot year?
It was just a pilot year. So that's why we didn't get any data on that. So I will give more information this fall and then I will, I will.
Okay. And then related to civics, if, if that is continuing, I, I think it was a few. It might have also been Dr. Y if they can't place this conversation in the grid at the moment. But at some point, we had a conversation around getting civics into grade five. And there was some like grant funding that I think at the time, maybe General Linsky was looking into. Is that something that has continued?
That has continued. General Linsky did apply for a grant and applied for a free curriculum grant of the investigating history from DESI. And we actually sent our fifth grade social studies teachers to a professional development along with the middle school teachers. That happened at the high school in September. And so they will be piloting part of that curriculum this year.
Retrospectively, could that be brought to us if we could approve it even though it's been expended?
Oh yeah, there was no dollars. There was no dollars passed. That's, that's probably what it was. It was more professional development for them to actually come do it. We didn't get any. I don't think we, I don't think we got funds for that, but I can look into it. But yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Kate? You, you take back your hand.
I'll, I'll just be the counterweight and go, I, I understand like we're down a rabbit hole. So like, since they passed this law in 93 to create this testing system in 1998, the one consistent thing that has remained, and this does not mean I'm anti-MCAS and does not mean I'm making excuses for these scores. But that same lawsuit that set off that all of ed reform in this state, those numbers haven't changed. So the, the more diverse you are, generally speaking, because you have all of these subgroups that have to meet all of these progress requirements, you, you are held to a different standard. And it is why for 30 years now, this has not changed. MCAS is a snapshot. It was designed to be a snapshot. After November 5th, we know it's just going to be a snapshot because it's probably, I'm not a betting man, but I would bet that they're probably going to remove those requirements. And, and I, I hear people's concern. And I always hate this night because MCAT, the, the MCAS system has done such a good job convoluting data, making up different ways to, or excuse me, changing vocabulary around how you grade it, that we all get lost in the data and, and, and we lose the picture. So I hear those conversations, but like, you know, when we're constantly buying curriculum and it's switching every three years, that could be a reason why. When the test comes out three different times, that could be why. Remember that right before COVID, we moved to partially electronic, then fully electronic, that didn't test, then we had kids that missed all of this stuff. So I think if we take a step back, we let the professionals do the job and we look at the data, that some of those questions are going to be answered. And that is not a, you know, I'm trying to oppose you guys for the sake of opposing it, but I, I just think that sometimes we, we get lost in that rabbit hole. So.
I have, you need to clarify that for me because
I think, I think, I think what David is saying is that we have to be, you have to take some of these with a grain of salt, really. I mean, while we do need a system for looking at achievement and progress and, you know, and, and comparing your district to statewide standards and making sure you're not falling down, you know, on your face. There have been a lot of issues specifically around like the, the five-year period that, you know, we're talking about here with the testing system and then.
Yeah, I'm not complaining that everybody is low. I'm saying that there are striking differences, which I believe any test would have brought out.
Yeah. And I think that's, I think that's clear with the Renaissance and the DIBL.
Yeah, if we broke this down by Renaissance, that, that's fine too. I'm not sweating about the fact that, you know, some of these, I, I think, I'm not saying that, oh my God, the sky is falling because, you know, there's only X number of students who are meeting or exceeding expectations or MCAS. I'm saying whenever you give a test, the test itself is flawed. Great. But within that, we've got some significant and, and I'm just, I'm, I am, I'm mostly concerned about the downward trajectory. If we've got kids testing at one level in, in grade three and they're, we're down in the single digits by grade eight, no matter what test, no matter what test you're looking at, we got to start asking questions about, are we serving those students in the most appropriate ways?
It's also a nice thing about analytic view. We're really going to be able to dig into grade level class, those kinds of things, you know, and and break it down that way too, which would be nice.
So, and Joan, I just want to clarify too, you're, you're talking about that, the chart that's at like math by grade and it goes from three to, across from three to eight, correct?
It's what I call the most comprehensive. Yes. So, yeah, yes.
So I think
By grade and by subgroup.
So I think what we need to keep in mind here too is that these are not the same students from three to eight. So I think that part of that, and this is just, you know, obviously my scientific brain going like, this is not a one-to-one. It's the variables. There's a lot more variables in here than a one-to-one comparison. Because you're not sampling from the exact same cohort throughout the whole thing.
I did not do it by cohort.
Right. So I think, I think, yeah, I think unfortunately, because like here for your third graders, we're the one, you know, maybe the ones most impacted, most closely impacted, which actually they got better scores. But, you know, so there's, there is some caveatting in there.
But JJ did such a good job of providing us with all this other data matching it to Renaissance. He kind of shoots that argument to foot.
Yeah.
But so you did too good of a job.
I'm just saying that specific one.
So.
I just wanted to, because one of the things you just said, I just kind of stuck out to me that you, you said, you know, they've gone from this to that in this grade. And I'm like, well, no, because it's not the same cohort being followed through.
It's not right. It's not, it's not a cohort view.
Yeah, but I, but I hear you. No, no, and I'm not making excuses either. I think you are an absolutely valid. And, you know, I look at this the same way and I'm like, the same thing, like what's going on, what, you know, and to hear that there are, there is work being done to look into it, it doesn't necessarily make me feel that much better because it is what it is.
It is what it is.
Uh, yes, Kate?
I just have a more general question about something that was brought up earlier about students with disabilities. I might just be misunderstanding something, but oftentimes is it right to assume that students with disabilities have IEP, individual education thing?
They do.
Okay. So I don't even understand why they're measured in the same way. Like their goals are different from the general population, everything. You're shaking, shaking your head, Joan. But like, that's confusing to me. So I don't know why we're they have different plans and yet we're comparing them similarly.
So they do skill plans, but they are for the most part required to follow grade level content curriculum standard, which means we will assess them compared to the same age grade level peers as well. So that's why they are there. And, you know, many, many a family will say, you know, you're putting my kid in a situation and, and, you know, for possible failure when we take these tests. Because they are below grade level by, by standard. They're, they don't qualify unless they're below grade level. So it's a difficult process for them, difficult for teachers. But if we don't know where they are compared to their peers, then we don't know where we can, where we can get them. So they are mostly tested with this unless, unless they have a significant disability, in which case they take a, a, a kind of different kind of assessment, portfolio process, but.
Let's clarify what significant means because you can be two to three grade levels behind and that is not considered significant disability.
That's right. So you're really 1.5 standard deviations below, one standard deviation below the median pretty much or more.
So let's, but what is that again, for people who don't live and breathe by education statistics? What is a kid who is supposed to be, let's pick a grade, fifth grade, who's 1.5 standard deviations behind? What is that kid doing differently? What is that? You can't say 1.5 standard deviations and give a good, and get a good assess, get a good place of where that kid is at, right?
So these kids are working on really adaptive, adaptive skills, daily skills, life skills, those, those are the students that we're referring to that would be eligible for a different assessment, really.
These are not, these are not the IEP inclusion kids, the kids who are in classes that we're talking about who would be eligible for, they're, thank you, they're subseparate. That is easier for the general public to understand.
But I want to, want to be clear, there are many subseparate students that would take this too. So it's just, it's those, yeah, yeah.
But is it fair to say that based on their IEP, they could be showing success in other ways that reflect this here?
1,000%. This is not the best measure for a student with a disability.
So when they talk about what are we doing, what are we doing, like, I think, we can ask that about the scores for sure. But it doesn't reflect all of the service and all of the investments that's being made for a student.
That's correct. Each student has a specific goal. Those goals are measured, and progress is measured regularly throughout the, the school year based on those goals. If it's a goal in math or a goal in reading or a goal in written language, it'll be in the IEP and it's measured regularly. We look at progress individually for these students, which is the whole definition of an individualized education plan, obviously. And with the MCAS, as something they do have to test to compare to other, other districts.
And, and They still receive the same grades on the same scale, many of them.
They do.
So when we're, so I'm, I'm just being very careful that we're, we're painting, we seem to be painting a picture that these students have different goals. They're still assessed, they're still expected to be at grade level, they're still, they're, and that's what the MCAS is measured.
So, but I have to
Love MCAS.
But I have to be clear. So in order to qualify as a student with a disability with an IEP, right? So we're talking about a large, large many of our students, right?
Yep. Cause we're a very high need district.
25% of our students. You have to have some kind of impact in your educational performance. And what that means is that it could be in reading or it could be in math or it could be in both or it could be in written language or all three. It could be for behavioral purposes, all these things. But you have to have that educational impact where you are already achieving below grade level. So if we were just to say, hey, you know, a special ed student should be achieving the same, they wouldn't be special ed eligible. Right? So they're by virtue of being on an IEP, individualized education plan and having a disability, they are starting off at a lower rate, right? So the goal is to make sure that they're achieving, right, comparison to their peers. And we want to see their standard growth percentiles go up. And that's really where you can look at some of the SGP data and we should be focusing on with our students with disabilities to see where they were previously compared to now. And that's really where we want to focus, I think, rather than just the, did meet, did not meet or met or exceed and so on.
I did want to just, I'll trace that one second. I did want to bring that back around to the point that I think what Joan was getting to is, again, you look across the grade levels and, you know, when we talk about, and I don't want to belabor students with disabilities, but that, you know, where a grade, in grade three, you know, 26% are meeting or exceeding, but then all of, all of a sudden, you're right, by grade eight, who are, you know, supposedly receiving the same level of support, who should be, because we have a one district that is supposed to be providing sports equally across all the different IEPs, are only achieving at 7% meeting or exceeding. So, you know, what's changing? What, is it the supports? Is it, you know, so I, I understand like asking the question and, and bringing it up.
And if it was a cohort issue, you would see the same decline across all of those groups, but you don't.
So I, I, I understand where the question came from, but Teresa?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a request if my colleagues agree, because I think this is a really important conversation. And I think we're probably going to learn more on the student services comprehensive review. Two and a half years ago, as spoke many, we did get a report from Mass Insight on our equity audit. And if you go to the equity audit, priority number two is really getting on the concerns that we are raising. So priority number two is that we were to ensure access to rigorous instruction with equitable support, especially for students receiving special education services and English learners. And if you go to that audit, there were three, three strengths, four challenges and six recommendations. And I would love under our new administration, when they have time to hear and learn more about their perception of where we are over the last two and a half years and how we're going to move forward. Which, Dr. Munoz, I did think a lot of what you said tonight and Joan's question of where are we going, how are we moving forward is an important one. I do think some of it is hit on in our SLA plan, if I am remembering that correctly. I'm from, but I, I would, if my colleagues agree, would love to comment on the respective priority area from our equity audit.
I think that's something we could work into a future agenda. Yeah. I think that's, that's, that's fair to, to bring that back. You know, I don't want to, I feel like we did the equity audit years ago at this point and it kind of just
Was it really about many years ago?
It really was, right?
I just got on.
And it just kind of went away.
Oh, really?
Well, and these are valid questions and, you know, aligning it to what you guys have made recommendations on makes sense, you know? Seeing if we're implementing the way we thought we would.
I feel like that just happened.
It does feel like yesterday. We've been here a long time. All right. Any other questions, discussion for Dr. Munoz? Thank you for that update. We knew it would generate a lot of discussion. I'm not quite sure why we put 15 minutes. I'll be a little more realistic next time. Okay. So that does bring us to our next gen item, which is consent agenda.
We have two donations tonight, Madam Chair, one from Ed and Donna Dugan for the amount of donation of 20, uh, let's see, it is a, I apologize, a negotiator robot.
You have to tell us what that is. So I actually read this.
There's no picture.
I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to
There is a picture.
Is there?
Oh, it's on the second page.
Like, but somebody explain the negotiator robot.
Somehow my screen is not able to share anymore. There we go. Resume presenting. And you can see the negotiator robot up there on the screen. And let's see.
It doesn't look like it negotiates.
Famous robot was used by law enforcement when they didn't want to send officers into a dangerous situation to Norwood High School. So it's a negotiator robot.
When I'm, I'm fabulously interested in, oh, it's for the robotic program. This is
It's like, it doesn't look like it negotiates. It looks like it kind of just like bashes through, but now it makes sense in the scenarios that it has. It's like, it doesn't look like it negotiates, it looks like it kind of just like bash us through, but now it makes sense in the scenarios that it has, was going into.
Yep, yeah.
That is that one, very thankful for the Dugan family, and the next one is from Mason's of Orient Lodge for Wellness Initiatives, the amount of one thousand dollars that are certainly gonna go towards some wonderful things in our community, for wellness activities and and different things that we'll use as we move forward, so.
Thank you, and I would be remiss if I didn't, I know them, and they'd kill me if I didn't say that, it's Duggan.
Oh, thank you.
Sorry, Ed and Donna.
Sorry, Ed and Donna. I'm gonna write it the next time.
So is there a motion to accept those donations?
So moved.
Thank you. Oh, seconded by Teresa, great. I have to poll, Teresa?
Yeah.
Kate?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
IMES as well, so that passes five to zero. Wonderful, that brings us to that point in our agenda where it is the school committee addenda. I am gonna start with our remote participants. Teresa, do you have anything this evening?
I have nothing, thank you.
Kate?
No, just a heads up on the loan fair, it's been brought up a couple times, it's on November second, from nine to twelve, and I think that'll be so good for everybody.
Joan?
I have no agenda this evening, thank you.
David?
Nope.
Short and sweet. I also do not have anything this evening, so that brings us to the end of our regular meeting. We do not have executive session this evening, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Joan, do I have a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Teresa, so I'll poll individually, Teresa?
Yeah.
Kate?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
An IMES as well, so that, we will end this meeting five to zero, and I thank you all for joining us. We will be back here on Wednesday, October thirtieth, seven PM, hybrid in the Savage Room, and have a wonderful, rest of your evening.
Was it seven thirty?
No, seven, seven. My god, did I say, no, seven, seven PM, back here, same bat time, same bat channel. Okay.